Do we have the city manager? Okay, it is seven o'clock and we will go ahead and convene and call to order the regular San Bruno City Council meeting of June 8th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. We will call it to order.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Here.
Councilmember Mason is not present yet. Councilmember Salazar.
Here.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina.
Here.
Mayor Rico Medina.
Here. Thank you very much. I'm going to ask if you would maybe turn the mic off and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Now I'm going to move on to item number three, which is public comments for items not on the agenda. Individuals will be allowed up to three minutes. It is the council policy to refer matters raised in this forum to staff for investigation and/or action where appropriate. The Brown Act prohibits council from discussing or acting upon any matter that is not agendized for still state. Do we have, and folks, if there's anybody from the public that would like to speak on items not on the agenda, now would be the time to please raise your hand so I can call upon, be called upon by the city clerk. Again, this would be the opportunity, if it's not on the agenda, to please raise your hand so you can be called upon. Not seeing anything at this time, we will proceed on to item number four, announcements and presentations. The first, uh, the first one, I will ask the city clerk.
Thank you. The storm drainage and flood protection fee election ballots will be counted on Wednesday, June 16th, 2021, beginning at 10:00 AM in San Bruno City Hall, Conference Room 115. That the ballot counting can be observed via Zoom and in person with limited capacity. Currently, we expect that around 10 members of the public may be able to fit in the room, but of course we'll adjust and we will make that public as we get closer to the time. The ballot, where am I? The Zoom link will be posted and available on the city's website at www.sanbruno.ca.gov/elections. The results of the tabulation are expected to be announced at the June 22nd, 2021 city council meeting and will be certified by resolution. However, I do want to note that once we have completed the ballot counting, we will be posting the unofficial results to the city website as soon as the ballot counting is completed so that people will at least have an idea of where we stand.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Uh, next item is item B. Join us for a community meeting on mountain flying safety that will be held on Monday, June 21st at 6:00 PM. The community meeting will include a presentation and guest speaker from the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. The meeting will be conducted via Zoom and a link will be available soon on the city's homepage at www.sanbruno.ca.gov. And I appreciate for us having that because as you know, many communities are experiencing that and so this is the proper agency and so they will be there to conduct the meeting. Item number C, receive update on COVID-19 response updates. Jennifer Dianos, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. We've pulled up the presentation here. My name is Jennifer Dianos. I'm the Assistant to the City Manager and I am here on behalf of the Emergency Operations Center Public Information Teams to provide you with the COVID-19 update. I'm, my clicker isn't working here. There we go. Okay, so this evening's agenda, I will go over the Beyond the Blueprint. That's the now famous June 15th date that's coming up next week. COVID-19 vaccination availability statistics and a program for cash prizes from the state city services and resources. And then I'll be available for questions after that. So I'll start with the Beyond the Blueprint. This is the state of California ending the blueprint for a safer economy. So for the last year, more than a year, we've underwent changes to businesses and operations and modifications to how we go into the marketplaces. And this is going to change beginning June 15th. As of that date, businesses may return to usual operations similar to what was before COVID. If we can all remember that, it seems like it was yesterday and forever ago, with the exception of mega events. And a mega event is defined as 5,000 people indoors and 10,000 people outdoors. After June 15th, there will be no restrictions for capacity limitations and physical distancing. Masking and feet coverings will be required per the California Department of Public Health guidance. That will remain current. Um, travelers should follow the CDC and the California Department of Health travel advisories and that will identify what is and is not recommended. And some employers are, most employers in California are subject to CalOSHA requirements and those will stay as indicated by OSHA. So that is separate from the June 15th date. As of today, it stands that we still remain in the yellow tier and so we'll be in the yellow tier for the last week of the blueprint for a safer economy. The COVID-19 vaccination, so with the increase in vaccinations and decrease in COVID cases, we do have here in San Bruno, our local statistics. As of yesterday, June 7th, 79.5% of our population 12 and above have been vaccinated. Um, 67 to 77, that's four census tracts within our healthy equity quartile have been vaccinated. And that's in comparison to the countywide statistics. Countywide, we're at 84.8 for 16 and above and 82.9 for 12 and above, also as of yesterday, June 7th. Um, in the health quartile, it's 71.6% of our population and for 16 and over, excuse me, and 67.9 for 12 and above. Um, in comparison to the nationwide goal, that goal was always 70%. And so we've met or exceeded that to some extent. The vaccine availability is now broad and so Californians aged 12 and over are eligible for vaccination. There are local vaccination sites that are available and most, if not all, do not require appointments. Um, there's a comprehensive list available on our county health website and that's smchealth.org. And there's a direct link on this slide and on our website to bring you to that calendar directly. You can also go to myturn.ca.gov and that includes a more broader scope for region-wide availability pharmacies. And for those that don't have access to the internet, there's a phone number that's available through the state that has the same information and that number is 833-422-4255. Um, so in addition to getting vaccinated, there's, there's a wide variety of locations that you can go to get vaccinated and I'm just going to pick one that I think is pretty great. It's a good idea and opportunity for those who have not yet been vaccinated, but it will be available at the Samatail County Fair. And that's going to start this weekend. It will be at Gate 5 at 1346 Saratoga Drive in Samatail. Not only will you get the benefit of being vaccinated, there's free admission for the vaccinated individual at the county fair itself. You'll get $20 food voucher to enjoy it at the county fair and for free ride tickets. Um, that all is free and all are welcome regardless of immigration status. There are several other locations, including high, local high schools. Um, SFO is hosting a vaccination site and so there are plenty of opportunities. This just happens to be a fun one here. And if that is not enough, um, the state of California is also offering Vax for the Win. And this is really a cash incentive for those that have and have not been vaccinated yet. So the three components that are on the screen, 10 winners will be selected on June 15th to receive 1.5 million in a lottery style winning. There's a drawing for $50,000 on Friday. This past Friday, 15 people were selected to win this drawing and there's going to be another 15 this upcoming Friday on June 11th. And for those that haven't been vaccinated, um, there's an opportunity to get a $50 gift card. So until funds are depleted, starting late in May, the first 2 million Californians that start and complete the vaccination can receive a $50 gift card. And if you have already been vaccinated, don't worry because you don't really have, you don't have to do anything to get entered into the drawing. So you're automatically entered once you're vaccinated. And the good news is that the 50,000 dollar drawing last Friday, um, there were several Bay Area winners. Unfortunately, not in Samatail County, but they were local nonetheless. City services and resources are, emergency operations center remains activated and will continue to monitor status. That's even after the June 15th date. There are no major changes to city services since our last report up to the city council, with the exception of a couple of items. So the public water fountains have reopened and that's as of last week. Our team is in process of developing a plan for the senior center reopening. It's currently underway and will be announced once that plan is available. And this is not a change, but just a reminder, indoor rentals at the recreation center will remain closed due to the construction of the new recreation and aquatic center that we just discussed. Customer service counters will remain open for in-person assistance. Appointments are encouraged but not required. And we do have as a convenience, this has remained available throughout COVID. We have a payment center that's on our city's homepage and so that will really route you to the appropriate webpage to make a payment for your water bill, to make a payment for your city net services bill. So it's all in one, uh, one page, so it's convenient, one-stop shop. And lastly, the California COVID-19 rent relief. So don't be thrown off by the title. It is called rent relief, but it is for both rent and utilities. This is for financial assistance for those that are income-eligible renters and landlords. And this program is really designed to assist those that are impacted by COVID-19 to assist with unpaid back due rent and utilities. And so you can check eligibility and you can apply at housingiskey.com. This is a program that has been available and remains available. There is a portal in English, there's another portal in Spanish and both are available on the state website. Earlier today, I don't have a slide, but earlier today, the county did also announce a program for relief for small businesses that will waive permit fees from the county health department. And so that program is also designed to support small businesses and will be reflected in the annual permit renewals. And so more information will be forthcoming on that, but that was announced and it is a token of support from, from the county to support our, our local businesses. That's all I have for you this evening. Just a reminder to sign up for SMC Alert for emergency notifications and to follow us on social media. And with that, I'm available for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Jennifer, for the report and the update. Any questions from colleagues? Okay, not seeing any, because stop sharing the.
Thank you.
Thank you very much again. Okay, next we're going to move on to item D. If we could bring in our mosquito abatement or director member, please.
I do have him coming in. It's taking a little longer than normal.
No problem. Item D is to issue a proclamation declaring mosquito awareness week as of June, for June 20th through the 26th of 2021. He is with us and I will read a few of the wheresses and I will virtually hand it to Robert and he can please say a few words to, to update us. Whereas the district works with mosquito and vector control districts throughout California, the United States Environmental Protection Agency and the State Department of Public Health to reduce pesticide risks to humans from mosquito and vector borne diseases and nuisance. And whereas National Mosquito Control Awareness Week will increase the public's awareness of the threat of diseases and encourage the public to take action in preventing mosquito transmitted diseases. And will highlight the activities of the various mosquito and vector research and control agencies working to minimize the health threat within California. Now therefore, I Rico, the Medina Mayor of the City of San Bruno, do hereby proclaim the week of June 20th through the 26th, 2021 as Mosquito Control Awareness Week in the City of San Bruno. And I ask that all citizens become a part of the team to quote, "Fight the bite." And now I'd like to turn it over to who represents the City of San Bruno exceptionally well and has always been willing to do that for us. It's Rico and your Director, Board Member Rico.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, Honorable Mayor, City Council and Staff. I'm Robert Rico, the City of San Bruno's trustee to the Samatail County Mosquito and Vector Control District. And I'm here to accept the city's proclamation recognizing Mosquito Awareness Week here in San Bruno. On behalf of the Samatail County Mosquito and Vector Control, I'm happy to accept this proclamation. I would like to read a short prepared statement which is as follows. The district thanks the council for actively supporting the district through this proclamation and legislatively. The district thanks the city, its staff and its residents for their continued assistance as we fight the bite. Park staff have reported dead birds, which the district has been able to promptly pick up and test for West Nile virus and have found to be carrying West Nile virus. They've been able to take the appropriate actions faster. Residents continue to report their mosquito concerns. Just a little bit about how I, as your trustee, participate on the district's Board of Trustees. I continue to serve on the district's legislative committee as we track pending state and federal bills that may affect our San Bruno community, Samatail County and the district. And we meet regularly with various legislators, legislators. I continue to chair a policy and procedures committee where we update district policies and procedures as required by county, state and federal requirements. And finally, I continue to serve on the finance committee where we monthly review the district's finances and budgets as well as review the district's five-year plan and budget to ensure that the district can continue to provide the needed and desired services for the residents of Samatail County and the city of San Bruno. Together, the city and its residents continue to work as a team, fighting the bite either by calling the district at 650-344-8592 or going to the webpage www.smcmvcd.org. Thank you for your proclamation and allowing me to give the short district update.
No, and thank you for being here to accept it. And again, we do appreciate what you do and what you have been doing to represent San Bruno and the information and reports that you give the council on a timely fashion. So thank you.
You're welcome.
With that, we will move on to item E. Receive presentation from the fire and police chiefs regarding the city's requirements for use of safe and sane fireworks in San Bruno and San Bruno's policies. I know that as I had asked for this to be up earlier than it usually is because as we know, last year there was, when we started receiving emails, I had started to receive them and I thought it was best for us to put this on the agenda for the community to hear it and get an earlier update. Turn it over to either, I believe, the fire chief first.
I'm here.
Chief.
Great. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the council, Ari Delager Fire Chief. Thank you very much for having us here this evening. We're here to present information regarding the safety and enforcement for this year's fireworks and 4th of July event. I'm joined here this evening by my colleague, Police Chief Ryan Johansson. And we're already on the next slide. I will start out by presenting the fire department's preparations for this year's firework and 4th of July celebrations. First and foremost, I wanted to highlight the fact that the San Bruno Fire Department, in coordination with the San Bruno Police Department, will be in what we call Unified Command for this event. This is an important management practice that we have, that is something we've always done in the past and it's an important structure that we provide to create a seamless response for both fire and law enforcement personnel for any potential event that happens during the 4th of July itself. We will have a Unified Command post that will allow us to co-locate and provide a seamless coordinated response to any 4th of July events of the day. And this year, as we have done in the past, the San Bruno Fire Department will provide additional equipment and staff during the 4th of July event. And this also will provide us an opportunity to utilize the new Type 6 engine. If anybody recalls, we recently were granted a Type 6 engine for the city of San Bruno from CalOES and that's a great asset to have for any type of vegetation fire that we may have in the city and respond to any other emergencies throughout the city. The San Bruno Fire Department will also have all of our fire prevention staff on duty for the 4th to provide fire investigation services as necessary. And the San Bruno Fire Department and Police Department have created a joint public service announcement that was filled by City Net Services and will be aired on Channel 1. As well as we are currently in the process of sending out a citywide mailer, a postcard with some of the safety issues associated with the 4th. Our fire prevention department or division has also conducted mandatory safety meetings with all the booth operators to make sure that they are really up to date with all the safety items that we want to make sure that they are aware of in relation to the selling fireworks and operations in the booths. And if I could have the next slide, please. A few safety items that I wanted to cover for this presentation this evening is the use of safe and sane fireworks for the public. First and foremost, the safe and sane fireworks have always, they will always have that seal from the state fire marshal's office as you see before you on the slide. Uh, second, we'd like to reinforce that we want to keep fireworks at least 10 feet away from any structures to keep that safe distance and separation. Thirdly, we want to make sure we don't use any fireworks near flammable materials, especially grass, trees and shrubs and any kind of garbage debris. And next, we want to make sure that folks would have an extinguisher hose or some other source of water nearby to be able to extinguish a fire if it did start during any of the 4th of July fireworks celebrations as well. And lastly, and most importantly, uh, this is something that's specifically been an issue in the past. Folks want to really be safe and put fireworks away in some type of container and often it's been placed in plastic containers to, to be able to get them out and covered up. Uh, and it's caused a few fires in the past for us. So we don't want to dispose of any recently used fireworks in garbage cans and any other receptacle that is, is not fireproof. So, um, those are the, the primary safety concerns that we have from the fire department's perspective. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to my colleague, Police Chief Ryan Johansson.
Chief Johansson.
Thanks, Chief Delay. Appreciate it. If I can get my slide to advance here, I'll continue on with the presentation. So as, as Mr. Mayor, members of council, as you all know. know, as the community knows, the 4th of July is a major undertaking for your police department. This year will certainly be no exception. We are acutely aware of the fact that as we are coming out of COVID restrictions on June 15th and moving to a 4th of July holiday that falls on a Sunday on a weekend, it will no doubt be a very busy 4th of July, even among other 4ths of Julies. I also want to make sure that the community knows that the police department is acutely aware of the fact that while many revelers really enjoy the 4th of July and it's a big part, or for a long time has been a big part of what it means to live in San Bruno to participate in 4th of July fireworks activities, there's also a significant segment of the population that is deeply troubled by the noise, especially things that come along with illegal fireworks use, both in terms of safety, explosions, the things flying through the air. And as has been the case for many, many years here in the city of San Bruno, your police department will do absolutely everything it can to minimize the impact, the negative impact of the 4th of July celebration within our city. So, beginning with some of the things we do each year and certainly are doing this year to prepare, obviously, we always have this robust outreach and communications effort. Most of that is via social media. The fire chief already mentioned the joint PSA with fire. I think that the 4th of July celebration has been a part of San Bruno for so long now that most of the community knows what's allowed and what isn't allowed. And truthfully, what we're really asking for is for people to just do the right thing and comply with the law to begin with. This is not something that the police department is going to simply be able to enforce its way into compliance with because it is so widespread, involves so many people celebrating at the same time. So, we really continue with the outreach, not because we necessarily need to educate the community, so much as to ask the community to please help us to respect everybody on the 4th of July and celebrate in ways that are responsible, safe, and that don't negatively impact the members of the community that really have a hard time with the loud explosions and some of the safety issues that come with fire, namely among those are any of our residents that suffer from PTSD and obviously pets have a great deal of trouble with the 4th of July. Additionally, pre-4th of July, we always go out and contact previous sort of problem locations, for lack of a better term, places where we've previously issued violations, citations, known residences that tend to have a number of illegal fireworks in the 4th of July. We maintain a list that rolls over year over year and we get out proactively just to try and remind them about the fines and to gain some compliance in advance. We also don't isolate our enforcement to the 4th of July alone. We deploy officers on an overtime basis to conduct proactive unmarked unit enforcement of fireworks violations for several days leading up to the 4th of July and even for one to two days after the 4th of July, depending on when the 4th falls. Just in an effort to acknowledge the fact that for many members of the community, we've gotten reports that fireworks are already starting and we're still, you know, a few weeks away from the 4th holidays. So, just know that we are out in advance trying to get on top of the problem. A big undertaking for us is every year, in collaboration with fire, we offer a formal incident action plan. This is a very robust document that covers basically all the contingencies that come with the 4th of July, not just basic operations in terms of how we plan to address safety issues and illegal fireworks usage, but also in terms of how we'll respond to significant emergencies in collaboration with fire if they arise. The fire chief already mentioned these mandatory safety meetings with booth operators. Police play an active role in that as well. And then we issue informational warning notices to all city facilities so that we can get those out, not only through police and fire, but through public works and permitting and all the other groups that tend to have contact points with the members of our community in order to just make sure that the word's getting out that the 4th is coming and what enforcement will kind of look like. So, in terms of illegal fireworks enforcement, to clarify, safe and sane fireworks are permitted for use starting on the 28th of June from noon to 9:00 PM. And then on the 4th, that expands from noon to 11:00 PM. But technically, outside of those windows, even use of safe and sane fireworks, the ones that have the seal on it that the fire chief presented to us earlier, is illegal. They're not to be used outside of those windows and timelines. Additionally, you're only permitted to use safe and sane fireworks on private property and you must always, as the fire chief said, be at least 10 feet away from any structures. Fireworks, including safe and sane, are not permitted in any city parks, public parking lots, schools or open space areas. Again, going with the fact that they must be private property that does not belong to the public or the city. And believe it or not, misuse of safe and sane fireworks is dangerous and illegal and can also bring along with it the $1,000 fine that possessing or using illegal fireworks comes with. The most frequent violations we see in this regard would be the use of safe and sane fireworks in unsafe locations such as in open fields with grass or other fuels that can readily burn, or the throwing of illegal fireworks or using them in a manner that is inconsistent with what is suggested by the manufacturer. All of those behaviors are illegal as well. Our response on the 4th of July is, as usual, all police department staff will be working the 4th of July. It's mandatory. Every single one of our employees is ordered into work so that we can have the best, most robust response possible to support the community and through what is, can be a pretty challenging holiday for a lot of people. So, please know that while I'm quite certain it will never be enough, given the scope of the problems that we often face on the 4th, your police department is pulling out all the stops and doing everything we can to be available to you. I can tell you, as I tend to share every year, this is an illustration, my oldest daughter's birthday is the 4th of July and I have not been there for one of those for 19 years now. The 4th of July is a huge undertaking for us and just please know that your police department is working very hard to make it better for all of you. We will be using marked units, highly visible, unmarked units that are not visible, bicycle units that are not very visible, and surveillance teams in unmarked surveillance vans, including surveillance equipment. So, I mentioned this for a couple of reasons. One is for those of you who might call and have complaints about people using illegal fireworks. If you don't see a black and white unit show up on your street, that does not mean the police department did not respond to your complaint. Oftentimes, the black and white units are about the least effective method to actually effect arrests and issue citations because we stick out like sore thumbs and it's very easy for people to see us coming from a very long distance and move out of the way. So, we make a much more robust use of unmarked units, most of which you will not recognize as police vehicles unless you get real up close and see people wearing uniforms inside of them. The same is true of bicycles and our surveillance teams. Please know that it is exceedingly difficult to put together what you need to put together to issue a lawful citation for violation of fireworks, of illegal fireworks use. Know that the officer has to actually on view, what we call on viewer, actually witness firsthand the use of illegal fireworks, be able to pin it to a specific individual, be able to recover evidence, be able to safely detain that person and issue a citation for what really amounts to an infraction at the city municipal level. So, there are a number of challenges and just know that, you know, when you, when you call and you tell us that you've seen someone using illegal fireworks, we still by law have to witness that ourselves and take several steps before a citation can be issued. And so, I can tell you from working this detail for the past 16 years, it is just not as simple as showing up issuing tickets. Oftentimes, we're out of vehicles lurking around in the neighborhoods on foot for 20, 30 minutes in order to hone in on the source of illegal fireworks usage and issue citations. And we are doing those things, but they take time, take resources. And so, we can't be everywhere all at once. We'll talk a bit more about that in just a moment. It is a $1,000 administrative citation for the use or possession of any illegal fireworks. The short list here, right, if we talked about the seal, but if there's no seal or you're not sure, generally if a firework flies in the air beyond about six feet or if it explodes, it is illegal. And you can buy these things in what might seem like legal locations in the Bay Area. So, a word of caution to the community that if it shoots in the air or it explodes, it is almost certainly illegal and could subject you to a $1,000 administrative fine from the city if you're seen by the police. Last year, we also used what we call social host citations. The municipal code does say that if your residence is deemed to be responsible for hosting a party or allowing illegal fireworks use to continue, we can cite the homeowner or person in control of that gathering. We do not have to find the actual individual who's lighting the fireworks themselves. And so, please know that if you're hosting a party on the 4th of July, it is your responsibility to ensure that none of this is going on association with your groups and your party. When it comes to reporting violations, so that please, this is a more difficult area and this is something that we have worked a lot with in terms of proving our theories over the last several years. And I'll try to keep it brief by saying that the vast majority of the citations we issued every year are the direct result, the proactive efforts of the police officers working the enforcement detail. Because as I previously described, it usually takes some time to kind of work your way into identifying and seeing exactly who's using the fireworks and to make that detention issue the citation. And so, what isn't a lot of value to us, and this is contradictory to most of what the police department relies on and does, you've heard me say many times that you are our eyes and ears as members of the community. And that remains true on the 4th of July, but only if you see very specifically an individual person who you can describe that is lighting off illegal fireworks. If you do have that information, calling the police's non-emergency number at 650-616-7100 is the best way to provide information to us so that officers on the street can use it to hone in and issue a citation. What is not of value to us, in fact, really distracts our efforts from getting to the source of the problems and issuing citations, are the more vague reports. We are acutely aware of the fact that there are aerial fireworks and illegal fireworks being used all over the city on the 4th of July. So, a courting party that calls the police department to say, "Hey, it's been going on all night on my block, on, you know, the 100 block of X Street, or in this neighborhood, or near that park." Honestly, the volume of those calls is nothing more than a distraction from the police department doing the best work that it can do in order to deter the illegal fireworks usage. So, while we appreciate reports from the community and the public at all times, this is a date where we'd ask that you use a measure of discretion and only make those calls and occupy the time of dispatchers who are handling hundreds and hundreds of calls over a really short span of time with good information that can be used to actually issue citations rather than just vague descriptions. So, that concludes our presentation for both the fire chief and I. Thank you for your time and for giving us this opportunity to get out ahead of this a little bit and explain what's coming. I know there will be another presentation coming closer to the 4th of July and then we always do the post-4th of July report to let the community know how the enforcement operations and other calls for service went. But for now, that's what we've got and I'm happy to address any questions or comments from council or the community.
Thank you very much to both chiefs. And if we could stop sharing the screen right now, bring us all together. But again, yes, but once again, thank you to both of you for your presentations. I do see Councilmember Hamilton is up, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief Delay, and thank you, Chief Johansson, for the presentations. I have a few questions. Will the PSA that's being put together for Channel 1 be made available online so we can spread it as far and wide as possible through our social media channels?
Yes, we'll always host a link to the video on our YouTube channel so that can be obviously disseminated very easily and then it'll be pushed out to all of the police department's social media networks as well.
Great, thank you. You talked about the proactive enforcement, pre-visiting the addresses where you've issued citations before. Are, will you also be able to visit addresses where you, we know that illegal fireworks have been used in the past, but we're unable to cite because of all the difficulties that you just mentioned about actually being able to get to the point of issuing a citation?
Yeah, essentially, we maintain a list of complaint locations. It's not all attached to citations. In fact, in many cases, citations end up being issued to people who don't live in the city of San Bruno and they're not necessarily associated with a residence. So, these residential follow-ups are mostly about large-scale parties where we know there tend to be illegal fireworks used year over year.
That's great. Okay, thank you. And then, last question regarding the total host citations. Do you have an approximate number of how many of those were given out last year?
This is just from my own personal recollection. I don't have it in front of me now, but I believe there were four issued last year of the three some odd citations issued.
Okay, thank you.
We generally just, I'm sorry, just to be clear, we generally, obviously, are going to do the best we can to give the homeowner or the resident an opportunity to comply for issuing those citations because it's great to say you have to be in control of your party, but it's also a very difficult thing to do, right? And you can't keep track of everyone all at once. So, we'll typically issue warnings and if we have to come back out for the same residence, that's when we'll issue those socialist sites.
Great. Thank you. I just want to acknowledge the hard work and the near impossibility of the job that your teams will have on the 4th and thank you for it in advance. Thank you.
Councilmember Salazar.
Thank you. So, let me start by adding my thanks to Councilmember Hamilton's appreciation to what both the fire and police have to go through to cover this, this event. And Chief Johansson, you especially having to make that family sacrifice every year in order to fulfill this obligation. It's unfortunate, but it is appreciated. Back before the pandemic, I did a ride-along and I can attest to the frustration. Oddly enough, I think we were 15 minutes into the ride-along where the first citation was issued. Somebody who, you know, clearly, first time doing it, had no idea what they were up to. But then the rest of the night, we were chasing shadows and, you know, there were neighbors where there were lookouts for the people who were doing it and they saw us coming a mile away, even undercover. So, yeah, it's definitely frustrating. I wanted to ask about the communication that's going to go out and I've heard concerns from the community about, you know, the dryness, the windiness, the fires that we've been dealing with are still fresh in people's minds. Could there be a focus on that in the communication to sort of appeal to people's more practical sense and just really drive home that the danger that there is from these aerial fireworks? You know, if at all possible, I don't know how far along the process is in getting that message out, but it seems like that's a very real concern that might help drive the point home. And I also wanted to share, just today, I was on a roundtable discussion that took place with the League of California Cities where, you know, there was almost 100 participants on that and everybody expressing the same frustration where, you know, they're, they're raising their fines up to the maximum, they're, you know, increasing enforcement and still having the same issues and concerns. So, we're definitely not alone. You know, cities that allow the safe and sane, cities that don't allow safe and sane are all pretty much in the same boat. You know, some people are trying to get creative. They talked about using helicopters, using drones. I guess helicopters are really just not safe to fly in those situations. Some people had some success with drones, but we're definitely not alone. And so, again, I just wanted to echo my thanks and I appreciate everything that you, that you all do.
Any other questions from colleagues? If there's anybody from the public who had a comment, please, now would be the time to raise your hand. If seeing no other hands up from colleagues or the public, I will just finish quickly that I did speak to the mayor of Pacifica this afternoon. Her and I had talked in regards to, as you know, they sell safe and sane fireworks as we do, which as a reminder, is a voter initiative. We will get emails, which we had, is just ban everything, a voter initiative in '05 that passed, as same as Pacifica has done. So, they also take cautionary measures, bring extra staff on. And that's where, how we're paying for these extra services, whether it's public works, fire, police, et cetera, is through a, I'll call it a surcharge that is given and passed through to the client, to the customer. And that is what is deriving the monies and the resources that we're able to put on the streets. And unfortunately, as Chief Johansson said, he hasn't seen his daughter's birthday and everybody has called in, right? And so, that means they're not with their family and friends and they're doing their best job to protect this community and everybody, it's all hands on deck. So, I again want to thank both of you and your departments and we will all be, you'll be in our thoughts and the same with the community as we embark upon this post-4th of July and our post-COVID times. So, thank you again. Appreciate it. And now, we're going to move on to consent calendar. And that is consent on our items are considered routine or implemented in earlier council action and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussions unless requested. I know we're going to make a comment on I. I believe, I usually let you folks start, so let me, I'm sorry, I jumped. Anybody who would like an item pulled for a separate vote? Not seen any separate votes, but obviously maybe some additional questions or comments? I had said I. Is there other items?
Item G, Mr. Mayor.
G. Got it. Thank you. Any others, please? I was going to say item E. Just wanted to, we had the ad hoc and just kind of bring a little update on that. So, with that, why don't we go ahead and, okay, I'm just being notified there is a hand up in the public and I don't know if it was for the presentation or if it's on consent. Why don't we bring in speaker, please?
Paul Wapinski?
It's regarding 5G. Should I talk now or do you want to wait?
Well, I'll announce it. Well, I'll announce it, and then we will get to that, and I'll bring you in. Thank you very much. Okay, so let's go back to the consent. We have three items. One is item E, authorize fireworks ban permit for 2021 upon findings that nonprofit organizations met requirements of resolution 2008-67, 2009-49, ordinance numbers 1700 and 1840. And I'd ask my colleague, Councilmember Salazar, to time in two, please, but there are 13 groups. Last year, there were 14. There's a maximum of 18. If there's more than 18, then there's the lottery. Keeping in mind, there are nine that are grandfathered in from the beginning of this process. As was indicated earlier, they have application process which asks various questions. It asks as far as the group, which is, you can see in your report, various groups, scouts, baseball, Lions, Rotary, American Legion, et cetera. And they go ahead and do that and deal with the two firework vendors that they kind of coordinate, help file the state paperwork. They have to be on profit. They're usually giving back, and they're doing things in San Bruno, and they ask for a description on the application. Hey, you know, what are these funds being used for? A lot of them are scholarships. Scholarships within the organizations or soccer, so that if there's the need that way, or equipment, or other type of activities that they do. There's also, they have to be current on the monies, so they can't be owing monies from past. And like I said, we had 13 this year, and I think 14 will come back, but it is a maximum of 18. And I'll let Councilmember Salazar talk about our suggestion going forward for an ad hoc and the need or relevance for it, because he obviously was good, did an Excel spreadsheet to make sure everybody was meeting the criteria, which staff puts together. So, Councilmember Salazar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And so, yeah, I've been on the subcommittee for a few years, and it's generally the process is that we review the stack of applications. There's a number of pieces of information that are required by ordinance that we look for, and so we just make sure that all of the paperwork is there. We look for that, the permit from the the state fire marshal, which is required, so every group is required to do that. Most of the paperwork actually done by the fireworks companies themselves, and so they're pretty diligent in filling out the forms and having the permission from the owners all submitted, and so it is fairly routine. The groups that are doing it have been doing this consistently for many years, and so they're they're known quantities in the community. They know their process, and so it is fairly routine. We had a conversation around, you know, whether the subcommittee is required. I believe that our consensus was that it's really not, staff is doing an adequate job of vetting it and meeting all the requirements, and so our involvement is very it's redundant to the process. We're not really adding a lot of value. We don't vet anything. We're not making any judgments. It's really just validating that everything is up to par with the ordinance, and I haven't found any inconsistencies in my time in doing it, and so you know, I don't feel that it's required that we do it, and the ordinance makes it optional, so I'm sure it'll be up to future councils and mayors to decide if they want to bring it back, but I mean, I would say, in my opinion, it's not something that's absolutely necessary.
And I concur with Councilmember Salazar, and even if it goes to, I believe it was June 2nd, the police and fire had a mandatory meeting with the users. And there was somebody from the organization, and if they didn't attend that, then they wouldn't be here tonight. So it's at this stage that they've met all the criteria, has made the $750 payment, registered with the state, et cetera. So anyway, that is our feedback, and I just, we just wanted to update you since we had said we would follow that up. Is there any questions on that? Councilmember Hamilton?
Is there, I don't recall from patronizing these stands in the past, is there a requirement that the fireworks must be sold to a resident of San Bruno? Like they check IDs and that sort of thing, and if not, have we ever considered having that be a requirement in the past? Because I know cities like Gilroy do that.
I'm going to say no, but once you see the city attorney up in there, I'm going to go right to him.
I'm not aware of what Gilroy does. Are you saying that there's a requirement that they can only sell to residents of the city in Gilroy?
Yeah, I read that in the newspaper. It's not necessarily.
That seems like a very unusual requirement that might be a violation of the interstate commerce clause, among many other things. But without literally knowing about that, I'd have to check. So normally, it's very difficult to restrict sales to some geographic area because it's for a lot of different reasons.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you for the question. Vice Mayor Medina, do you have a question? Oh, this for the next op. Okay. Okay, all right. If nothing else, we're going to go on to G, and that was adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with the also planning and design for the development of the city's safe routes to school plan in an amount not to exceed 265,416. And we did have a member of the public that wanted to speak on this, so if, City Clerk, if you can, and bring in Paul.
Yes, Paul Wapinski, I'm bringing you back in.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
I read this a couple of times because it's still kind of not clear what exactly this is supposed to accomplish, and I understand it's a grant. But it seems like there's a lot of bucks being spent for the bang, and it seems like the bottom line intent is to ask parents not to drive their kids to school. So couldn't that be done in a way of like maybe sending an email to them or a letter to them instead of spending $250,000? Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, and we're going to bring it back to City Council and Vice Mayor Medina.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm sure staff could do a way better job of explaining what this grant actually does. I recall being at one of the workshops, and if I told it because I think it's important that our community know how we are working with our schools, how important our student safety is, and if staff could just give a little bit more background on it and explain the extent of what's going to happen with this money, that would be wonderful. Thank you.
Yeah, so the Safe Routes to School program. The goal is to identify through various means, walking audits, surveys, engagement with, I think one of the critical components is engagement with the community between the city and the school, and the students and their parents, is to understand what some of the hurdles might be. We understand that, you know, we can encourage them to walk and bike when they can, but there may be, you know, fundamental structural obstacles that, you know, mentally don't make them feel comfortable doing so, and so what the Safe Routes to School plan does is to allow for those to be identified, their engagement, and then do the walking audit. And in addition to infrastructure changes, there's also programmatic programs that can be identified, and so this plan, what it does, it is grant-funded. There's a small local match, but what it does is to allow us to be more competitive for those grants because some of the infrastructure improvements could be, you know, more substantial, and so this makes us more competitive because we've had that community engagement, and there's a process, and it is a well-recognized document.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I was wondering if, because I recall staff, city staff, I remember Councilmember Laura Davis walked along with myself and students, parents over at Bel Air. Is this in addition to the work at Bel Air?
It is. There are a number of schools identified with the public schools and the private schools, and we've reached out to the schools to understand their interest. Caltrans does allow us to if the school is not interested, for instance, a private school indicated that that they were not interested in participating for one reason or another, and so they do allow flexibility, but we did identify the various schools, and one additional school was reached out to us after this the RFP proposal process, and so we have added them, but we could potentially swap them with the one that didn't want to, and there could be some potential savings.
Right. Thank you very much, and Mr. Mayor, Superintendent Espinoza sent us an email, and I just wanted to make sure, take knowledge, his appreciation.
Well, I think let's just read it. City Manager Grogan and Mayor Medina, and you were also CC'd. I'm emailing because I noticed that you will be discussing and taking action on the Safe Routes to School Plan. I wanted to let you know that our school board and district appreciate our city working to ensure that our students are safe as they walk to and from school. Again, and have a great meeting. And then again, from the superintendent, Jose Espinoza. And I was at that, I think they call it a, I have to ask the Vice Mayor, I think they call it a walking audit or I was at the Bel Air one, too. You just sent.
Right, right. We were on the other side.
So it was interesting to actually watch students in here from the folks that came together, and you act, when you're looking at it, for you, is you kind of see a different and different set of eyes about potential hazards or angles or maybe vegetation that should be cut back and things like that. That, you know, you drive by, you don't think about it, but when you're actually watching these young people coming to and from, or their folks or guardians getting them, it's in a different light, so I see value to that. So is there anything else from my colleagues on item G? Let's move to item I, accept resignation from profit and saving in parking committee member effective May 28, 21, and direct city clerk to post a vacancy notice, make accordance with state law. And what this is, is not somebody's leaving, they're just now going to have another role. So Martin Rosso has been serving on the traffic team, but he has its chair. Now has joined the San Bruno Planning Commission. So we'll say that the mayor and vice mayor wanted to make some definite knowledge and make him for the service, the SBC. He didn't outdo Tom, though, as far as Tom's years on the TSPC, but we very much appreciate the time and effort and folks that are willing to give up their time to help out a community. Is there anything else on consent? Is there any action from my colleagues?
Make a motion to approve.
Okay. Okay, there we go. The motion that Hamilton second, Salazar roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Mason?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martin Medina?
Aye.
Mayor Rico Medina?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Now we'll move on to item six, which is conductive business, and city clerk?
Item 6A, receive a report and confirm date for transition to a bi-district method of city elections. Consider adopting a resolution appropriating $46,000 from general fund balance and authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with National Demographics Corporation for districting services.
Turn it over to the city manager.
Good afternoon, members of the city council and members of the public watching at home and on Zoom. I have the pleasure to present this presentation regarding bi-district elections. Supporting me tonight to answer any questions will be the city attorney as well as the city clerk who have supported this endeavor and were part of the presentation that you received in 2020. So the objective for this item, we want to follow up on council's direction and your intent to transition to district elections for the November 2022 city council elections, and obtain approval tonight to initiate the required work. That's the demographic analysis, the public outreach, the production of preliminary district maps, and the development of various options for the city council to consider. And our last objective is we want to outline the scope of work and the schedule for this districting process. The recommended action is before you on the screen, as well as the city clerk just read it. So we'll come back to this towards the end of the presentation, but it's to essentially initiate this work with a firm called National Demographics Corporation. So our presentation has an agenda. We'll go through a little bit about the background. We'll talk about the services from NDC and the summary schedule. We'll then talk about the bi-district elections and how that may interface with mayoral election structure, and then talk about next steps. So background. Council will remember that on March 10th, 2020, you received a very detailed staff report that is attached to the staff report for tonight. That staff report regarded options to mitigate the city's exposure from a potential claim that we are not in compliance with the California Voting Rights Act, as well as attorney fees that could have to be paid due to the receipt of a claim. In addition, the city council received a detailed presentation from Doug Johnson, the president of the National Demographics Corporation on transitioning to a bi-district method for city elections, and there were several conversations with regard to the California Voting Rights Act. We are not replicating that presentation for you tonight, but we are beginning from your prior direction. And at the end of the March 10th meeting, the city council also discussed ways to mitigate the risk and eventually adopted a resolution of intent to transition in either 2020 or 2022, thus obtaining a safe harbor. And the language from that city council resolution is on the screen, and I'll read it. It expressed the city council's intent to transition from an at-large election system to a bi-district election system for city council members commencing in either November 2020 or November 22. The very last thing that the city council directed for staff to come back to the city council at the very next meeting for further discussion, and we get that. And so on March 24th, we returned to the city council, and there was a significant discussion with regard to the pros and cons of transitioning to district elections in 22, in 2020 or 22. And you'll all remember that COVID-19 was really new to us, and there were significant conversations about the unknown related to community engagement, and exactly how remote participation would work during COVID-19, which had just begun. And in addition, there was conversations around delaying until 2022 would allow for a thorough discussion of the possible, of a possible charter change or moving from a general law city to a charter city, which is one of your strategic initiatives, and as well as alternative voting mechanisms for the election of city council members in conjunction with district elections. Those alternative methods require us to be a charter city, which again is a strategic initiative. And so at the conclusion of the March 24th, 2020 meeting, the city council passed a resolution to postpone the demographic analysis and community engagement until 2022, and so it was instead discuss and decide if we are going to a district election structure in 22 after the community outreach and public engagement, and again, that's what we're here to talk about launching, and so and further until that, the staff communicated once again with NDC, National Demographics Corporation, and received an updated call for the work to begin. At a high level, there's a very, very detailed scope work attached to the staff report, but NDC would provide support for a advisory or independent districting commission. That is an option. Not every city does it, but many cities do, and we will bring that discussion to the city council on if you would like to set up an advisory or independent districting commission. The proposal within NDC does include the cost to support that commission and no additional costs. There's a course of demographics analysis and using census data. There's the GIS mapping, there's presentations at public hearings where NDC will overview, will provide an overview of redistricting laws and the jurisdictional demographics, a lot of the information about the California Voting Rights Act and why cities. lot of the information about the California Voting Rights Act and why cities increasingly are transitioning to district elections. So that's built into the scope to have that public education. They will provide outreach assistance, a project website, and then various online mapping tools for both the city council and the public per state law to undertake the districting process. There are at least five meetings that have to be conducted. And we are, by the way, planning more because there are various community engagement workshops. But the minimum is two public hearings prior to any maps being drawn or discuss or discussion of the composition of the districts. Two public hearings after the maps have been drawn, during which the public can provide input regarding the content of the draft map and propose a sequencing of elections. And then another final public hearing to introduce the ordinance to establish by district elections. And then a final meeting that has to occur at least by the next, at least until the next regularly scheduled meeting for the adoption of that ordinance. So project timeline and summary is on the screen. This is roughly a 10-month process. And so it is beginning from June 2021 going until April 2022. The task for each of the various phases are on the screen. So in June and July, there'll be project planning discussions about the public mapping tools that we will use. Again, that decision on whether we will have an independent commission or advisory group and talk about a host of other options related to the project and the components. So there will be meetings of the city council where we will have these discussions. Staff will have some internal launch meetings and then prepare to bring those decisions to the city council. And then we'll begin the project outreach and we ramp up our information sharing to the community. Through July, through September, the mapping tools will be prepared with preliminary population data and pre-draft map hearings will be held. October 21 through January of 22, the census data will be received and processed and they'll develop draft maps and have public workshops and hearings and develop the information for the city council to consider with the idea that we would come to January through April and have the final process for any revisions to the map, but have final city council action on if we're transitioning to district elections, what will be the sequence of those elections by April 2022. In another part of this presentation, there had been a conversation that the city council with regard to adjusting the mayoral election structure. We did have conversations with NDC about this. And so that's included within your staff report and we'll give a few slides to just have that discussion because the city staff has been directed to take a look at the cost of potentially putting an item on the gubernatorial special election for 21. And so we will be coming back with that information. The date of that election is not known, but there have been some questions on how would that potentially relate to district elections? And through these slides, we hope to talk about that briefly. So as we know, our current San Bruno mayoral election structure has a directly elected at-large process. And what does that mean? So directly elected means elected separately from the other seats on the city council. At-large means essentially that there's no district, there's no residency restriction within the city. This was adopted and approved by San Bruno voters in 1977. Key point about by district elections is the process you have to elect your mayor is not mutually exclusive with having by district elections. And what that means is that the city may retain its current structure for how the mayor is elected, or you may change that process, which again will require voter approval. And so at a high level, we wanted to just show that, which is this is our current structure where the blue line represents the city boundaries, the red line represents the mayor's position. And so our current process is, as you know, five persons by the city council, got all of them with the mayor directly elected at large and all, and the other four city council members serving at large. And so should the city decide to go to district elections and retain the current directly elected at-large mayor, that is possible. And there's a graphic of that on the screen. And so that is where you would have four council districts instead of having your four council members at large, there are four specific city council districts and your mayor remains directly elected and at large. Should the city council decide to put the measure to potentially change that before the voters in a rotational structure, you have a couple of options. One is to have, as shown here, is a bi-district process with a rotating mayor where you have five districts and the mayorship rotates among those five districts. And so in this model, you would not have a at-large district. The next option would be have a bi-district process with a wrote, with a rotating mayor, retain an at-large district. And so that's shown here where you would have a structure that has four distinct council districts, so your city would be broken up into four districts, but you would also retain a fifth at-large district, but your mayoral selection process rotate amongst all of the five districts. And so that would at some point include the at-large and then go through the other four as well. So in summary, the city may retain, the city may retain, sorry, I did not put my phone on mute. The city may retain its current electoral process should it go to district elections and there's options for that. The city may change its electoral process for the mayor and there's an approval process for that that requires action by the voters. There are several by district election structures to choose from. Some can be implemented by council, whereas others, of course, require voter approval. Should the city council opt to adjust its mayoral selection process, doing so before transitioning to by district elections is advisable. And that comes from NDC. Well, we had the conversation in a sense, should the city transition to district elections in 22? If there is a decision to adjust the mayoral selection process, what NDC advised is that having that discussion in 21 does make some sort of sequencing sense because you would essentially know that process before you confirm your district, your districts that you select. And lastly, no direction is required from the city council at this moment on the mayoral selection process under if you decide to move to districts. We are simply providing this information because the question had been raised of how does district elections and the mayoral selection process work? And they're not mutually exclusive and you can have the current structure or other structures. So with regard to next steps, again, we are here tonight to receive city council input and direction on the items that are, on the action items that are before you. Should authorization to enter into the contract be approved? Staff will of course do that. And there's also another contract aligned to this effort and that's to obtain meeting facilitation services for our public outreach as well as support for community engagement. And within the NDC proposal, there was conversations or a section on that. And we have sought a proposal for additional support with meeting facilitation that would also come with creating summaries of all of that public input and engagement, providing them to the council on a timely basis as well as retaining all of that information and organizing it and helping with our outreach. The cost of that is not for you tonight. The cost of that is included in the proposed 2021 budget. There is approximately $60,000, there is $60,000 in the city clerk's budget for this effort that includes both the meeting facilitation and public outreach services as well as the cost for mailings. We know that doing a citywide mailing, which we would certainly do with this effort, is approximately $5,000 to $7,000 per mailing and we are envisioning at least doing four of those mailings. And then we would initiate the redistricting process with an internal kickoff meeting, develop a detailed project schedule and then launch the community engagement. So again, the recommended action before the city council is to receive the report and provide direction regarding the intent to transition to a by district method for city elections and consider adopting a resolution appropriating $46,000 from the general fund fund balance and authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with National Demographics Corporation for districting services. So I want to thank you. We are here for any questions or additional input or direction from council.
Thank you for the report. And if we could stop sharing the screen. One possible, thank you so much. If there's any members of the public that have comments or wish to speak on this, you can go ahead and raise your hand now and I'll give that a couple of minutes. But in the meantime, I'll bring it to council for questions. Councilmember Mason.
From my, thank you, from my recollection, we were going to, we had requested options around districting, there were options and if there were, what were they? And we had also requested demographics around why San Bruno in particular may be at risk of this, you know, this letter that has put a lot of cities in fear of having to pay out these funds. And I don't, I don't see any of those.
And so the city council did not request that. What you did at the March 24th meeting is postpone entering into a contract for that work in 2020. And we are here tonight requesting financial authorization to do that analysis, to present those draft maps at demographic analysis, which is the process and the scope of work that is outlined in the National Demographics Corporation's scope of work that's attached to the staff report. And so that network is a part of this effort and it has not been done because we did not enter into contract for that work in 2020.
Okay, so I don't, I'll have to watch it, but I know that I had requested what the alternatives were and what the options were when this came to us last year with the contract and I believe it was for $75,000.
Councilmember, we said at that time, the contract was $45,000 and it is only $1,000 more this year. And that was on the May 10th and May 24th agenda items for 2020.
Okay, thank you.
Are there questions from colleagues? Okay, now I've seen it. It's all right. Vice Mayor Medina.
Thank you for the report. It took us a while to get here. I think we were being cautious in moving forward and I recall that at a certain point we also were told that getting census data was really important because of the demographics. And that's not going to come until later on in the year according to the schedule. So I'm in favor of this contract. I believe it, we do have a very qualified vendor for these services. At what point do we decide if it's an advisory committee or it's the other, the other one that was on that list? And that's my question.
We'll be coming to the city council with that question in July. Once we enter to contract, we'll have a kickoff meeting, we'll organize the, all the work and then create a detailed calendar that has actual target base for the meetings that we're going to have. And then NDC will support the city staff in having a study session with the city council to talk about all of the options related to the project, which is sort of number of workshops. But the key critical question absolutely is whether there will be an advisory or independent commission to support the work.
Okay, and as we're talking about it now, I believe additional options would be available in the elections if we were a charter city. I think we had some discussion about that. And it was mentioned in this staff report, so that's something maybe city manager can discuss that a little bit more, just for a little bit more clarity on the options that are ahead of us.
Sure. In March of 2020, there were questions around different alternative voting mechanisms that can be used for city council elections. All of those required in a charter city, which is a separate strategic initiative, a separate effort. I believe there were, I can't honestly remember the questions around how many people are on the city council occurred at March, but I do know over the last year, the question of could there be more city council members or how many districts would you draw? That is again tied to being a charter city. At a general law city, you can only have five seats on the council. And so I do know that there are options or alternatives that have been talked about. In many ways, nearly all of those are related to the charter, charter process and should we decide to switch from a general law city to a charter city. Some of those have implications on how many districts we draw and how those council members would be elected in those districts, but not all of those questions are actually sort of dependent upon or mutually exclusive to the work that we would do in this project. But the fact that we will have both efforts going on over the next 12 months is important so that we can have those conversations and not tell those efforts.
Okay, that brings up the next question about that actual dovetailing. So doesn't the charter city have to be done first to be able to enact the options? So just want to make sure that one has to go first, right?
I see the city attorney has joined. You've been here, you just negged your cameras on, so go ahead.
No, and if the city manager has something to add, I think Vice Mayor Medina, I think you're correct. So you, for example, would not be able to draw seven districts if you didn't already have a charter that was already adopted by the voters that says you have seven council members. So there's, I think there's the sort of the compartment for the horse issue with respect to the charter city and the city manager is correct, of course, that that is one of the strategic initiatives. But that strategic initiative in the past had focused on adopting a charter for essentially the sole reason of adopting the transfer tax or the real estate tax and not to make other wide-ranging changes in the city's structure. But that, of course, is within the city council's purview, but it then may affect which has to go first.
And I'll just add, the conversation on if the city council would like to propose increasing the number of city council seats is one of those items that would be a sequencing where you have to do one or the other. However, if that was not on the table, you could certainly have alternative voting mechanisms as has been, as council members have desired to receive information on. And you don't have that sequencing issue. And so the city attorney is right, when we launch the charter process, we will have to really decide at that point what's going to be in that proposed charter should we decide to move forward. And what we said during this strategic initiative process is, for lack of a better term, it would be a very limited would be a, a very limited charter process aligned to a potential real estate transfer tax. And so absolutely, every time we talk about a charter, additional things are brought up, and we're going to have to make those decisions. Two separate strategic initiatives, charter city and district elections, that may have been intertwined, at this point they are not based on the direction we have from city council, and so you don't have a cart before the horse issue if you decide to proceed with the demographic work, mass production, and community engagement related to district elections. I hope that's, that's clear.
Councilmember Salazar.
Thank you, sir. So there's, I, I've, over the past few years, I've heard a lot of confusion around charter cities and what charter cities can do and can't do. And hearing this conversation, I pulled up the state government code, and it says the government of a general law city, which we are, is vested in, A, a city council of at least five members. So at least five. We could do more. There's, there's no upper limit in what a general law city can do. So I just wanted to point that out, that if, if we're going to bring up those parameters, let's make sure that we, that we have them right, because I think there is an opportunity, if we wanted to go more districts, to do that.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Well, my, my comment on this part of the discussion might, might change based on what Councilmember Salazar just said, but what I would, it seems like the, the whole cart before the horse issue really only comes into effect if we need, if we need more seats and if we want more seats. And I would want the, I would want to see what the, what the, the analysis that we'll get for the, for what we're, you know, the proposal for tonight, I would imagine that analysis, you know, would, would come back and, and would include how many districts would be, would be appropriate, given the size of our city and the demographics in our city. So I would, you know, that, that might be the, the path forward is just to move ahead the way that's being outlined here, and if the, if the recommendation comes back that says, you know what, given the way that the city is, is laid out, that it makes more sense for you guys to have seven, then either, as Councilmember Salazar said, we just go seven right away, or if we have to be a charter city, then maybe we have to change gears to do that first.
I, the city, city attorney, I, I sense you may have something to add.
One comment, I'm really hoping when we go back to in person, that there's going to be some way that the city attorney can just magically appear whenever something legal needs to happen. That's been my favorite.
No, this has actually worked out better. Don't have to look for a hand or anything, I just know to go, show to you, so it works good.
I, I just want to be off camera not to distract the, the main presentation. So I think we, we have a variety of questions that are swirling around, and I'll, I'll begin it with the city council, really very few of them have been vetted, and I would say almost none of them have been completely vetted. And so these questions about, well, can we have five? Can we have more than five? What does that require? You know, really, nobody is, that I know of, has looked into those. I haven't been asked to look into them, so I haven't. It is, you know, Councilmember Salazar is correct, that's what the government code says. However, I believe without having done further research, that that would require a vote of the people to increase the number of seats on the city council. So I don't think that's a, an action the city council could take, although I'm not sure about that. So I, I could be wrong, and I, but, but that's the problem with sort of trying to design these processes on the fly of the city council meeting when there's really been an incomplete opportunity for, for staff to do their work. And that is a concern, because if there is required to be an election to increase the number of seats, if, if that is the case, then you do have to have that before each charter, excuse me, before district elections are adopted. You can't have one being contingent on the other at, at the same election. So I think there are a variety of interests involved in charter city, there are a variety of interests involved in district elections, and what we're really just trying to do is figure out what is it that, that staff is going to be tasked to do, and when do those things have to be done, and can they be done in the time that's allotted? Because as the city manager indicated, there's already going to be necessary five meetings for a charter city and additional meetings that, you know, that are already being planned for that. So if, if now there is sort of additional work that is going to be necessary regarding the charter city and district elections, then we, we all sort of need to do that, and perhaps you're, you're hearing a little bit of the, the frustration about the difficulty in rallying what are the issues that we're trying to address and in what period of time. So we, we're here for you, we're here to do that analysis, but we really can't do that analysis on the, on the fly of the city council meeting.
I appreciate your feedback. Anything, Councilmember Hamilton?
Well, you know what, I want to make sure we're done on that, on that topic. I made my comment, but it was specifically about that while we were discussing that, but I had other comments. Okay?
Please proceed.
So my whole, my whole position on going to district elections is, has been from the beginning for me, that that's something that I want, that I, that I think San Bruno would benefit from. I don't necessarily think that that's something that I would want to do now, given the many, many, many other things that we have before us, but I don't see that we also, that we have much of choice. You know, we're being mandated by the, by the outside forces to make, to make this move now, which is, I think, a bit unfortunate. This is something I, I would want us to get other, other things in our house in order first before attacking this, but we don't have a choice. So I'm in, in, I'm in favor of, of moving ahead. I'm also just, I'm, I'm incredulous to, 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 to read, when I was reading the staff report, that it was even being considered that twenty, that 2020 was a possible date to move to them, given all work that would need, that needs to be done, and you guys were talking about it in March of 2020, you know, even, you know, before COVID and all that changed everything, that there was a possibility that it was going to happen in November, it was never going to happen. Given, you know, I mean, maybe that's a benefit of hindsight, but it's going to be a lot of work between, between now and 2022, and I think we need to, I think we need to get the, the vendor on board and start moving ahead with it so that we can make, make those deadlines. That's my comment.
For my self, I just want to be clear, to my knowledge, we have not been forced, we have not received a letter, we have not been required. It was staff saying, let's be a little proactive, let's not get, I'm going to call it what it is, a thirty thousand dollar letter that says, we believe these are these findings, and you don't meet the criteria, and you need to go to districts or apply to court, bottom line. And I know I forwarded something to the city attorney today that got from a city down south, and I, and I really didn't, he hasn't had time to go through it, and I haven't either, but it was interpretation, but I think it's still going into a higher court, honestly. So, but anyway, I just wanted to be clear, I think that's why all of that coming up too, was to kind of get that, and like you said, with all that was going on with staff and the COVID situation that kind of tipped it off. Other, other comments or questions from my colleagues? Councilmember Mason.
Yeah, I just want to be clear then, because I did, well, I'm going to, I am going to push back a little bit, because I did watch that March tenth and the March twenty-fourth meeting, and there was a request for more information. There was a presenting, I think, a public comment from Aras Hanan, there was another one from Plymouth, and there was another one from the Center for Election Science, the Chair Felix. They all talked about this other option, and in one of the areas that I did specifically express I wanted to know more about before we automatically select district elections was what are these other options? And none of that has been presented tonight.
Sorry, city manager.
To be, to clarify, were you talking about the, I believe it was proportional representation?
The city manager, did you have your hand up, or?
It is my understanding that those other options are related to a charter city and a different electoral method, not district elections. But what I recall is that the action before council that night was to approve the work with National Demographics, so all of the analysis and options could be presented to the city council. In 2020, the election was to not proceed with that work, and so that work was not done. And so if we are going to go down the path to analyze the potentiality of district elections, analyze all of the various options with regards to district elections, some of which may relate to a charter city, we have to engage in the work to do that, and the work to do that is the scope of work with the National Demographics Corporation. And that's why we have the item that is before the city council tonight, to do that work. It's not a authorizing the NBC contract, it's not a guarantee that the city will transition to district elections, it's authorizing the work to be done to prevent the variety of options to the city council to make that decision and to make the other decisions that may or may not have an impact on a charter city or a other voter-approved process.
And I, and I think you made a similar comment, if I recall, and you had said that we may, that we may need to actually get another consultant to come in to do that work to compare, and that was since last year. And this particular consultant specializes in districting, and I don't know that there are other districts that have done proportional representation, but I know that there is what appears to be somewhat of a think tank who has an entirely different method that I would really like to learn more about.
Okay, well, I, I think it, so A, we have an action, whether to confirm a date, whether to adopt a resolution for the forty-six thousand, I've heard kind of a few things here from, from colleagues, and also Councilmember Mason brought up about this other option that some members of the community or public and others have brought up, but is that a consensus that the council wants this other information as well? Because obviously, I think that's what Attorney Zafarano was saying, you know, we need, we need the direction, we need the guidance, can't do it on, on the fly, which is correct. Councilmember Hamilton, I see your mic is on.
Well, this might have just been, but I'm, I'm getting a little foggy on it now. Is this vendor that we're entering, that we're proposing entering into contract with qualified to bring us options like proportional representation? Or would that need to be subbed out to another vendor? Or do we even know that? Do we even know the answer to that question?
Proportional representation in city council elections is something that NBC is qualified to help advise on. There was a entity that came to the March twenty-fourth meeting that Councilmember Mason is right, is a think tank that has positions on and ideas about how to do proportional representation. We can look into that think tank or that method and bring forward options to the city council with regard to if and how proportional representation would work. That may involve entering into contract with the vendor that came in March of 2020 or someone else. At this point, I honestly do not know the answer to that question. What I will forthrightly tell you is that post the March twenty-fourth meeting, the action from city council was to delay work on this until, until, to not work on this in 2020, but initiate work, and that can be done so the city council could make a decision if the city was going to district elections in 2020, which is why we're here today. And so all the work and analysis, including looking at proportional representation, was not done, and that was the action of the majority of the city council. It is true that Councilmember Mason talked about and brought up proportional representation at that meeting, and it is something that, should the city council want us to look into, should there be a desire to bring that back, we will absolutely do that. It is something that when we have that meeting in July with NBC, and we talk about the options and start to envelop ourselves in this work, we can talk about it at that point. But until we really launch the effort, all of the various components and other items connected to district elections haven't been done because the effort hasn't begun.
And city attorney, I'm going to, your mic is off, so I'm going to assume you don't have anything to add, but seeing you makes me gravitate to ask you.
Sorry, no, I, the city manager said it well, I, I think this action is an action that needs to precede any other discussions or actions, because you can't really get anywhere unless you do the initial demographic analysis.
Okay, well, you've heard from staff council in the presentation. What's the pleasure of the council?
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution appropriating forty-six thousand dollars from the general fund to enter into a contract with National Demographics Corporation for districting services and bringing other options for our elections.
Okay, if the motion was clear, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Okay, there's a motion made and seconded. The city clerk, are you clear on the motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Believe so. I will do roll call vote. Councilmember Hamilton.
Aye.
Councilmember Mason.
I apologize for clarification then, so the way that Councilmember Hamilton just read it, then it's like an amendment to the existing resolution, because it brings other options, is that right?
That was my intent, that was my intention.
He added like what he said.
Specifically districting services, so I wanted to make sure to include those other options.
He added, he added to it.
As long as it includes the other options, then I'm, I'm a yes.
So you're a yes? Okay, thank you. Continue, I'm sorry, city clerk.
Councilmember Salazar.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina.
Hi.
Mayor Rico Medina.
Hi. Thank you very much, city clerk. City manager, does that give you, and our city attorney enough direction and?
That's clear direction, we will enter into contract with NBC to begin the work, have an internal staff kickoff meeting with the contractor, and then return to the city council for a number of critical decisions about the project, timing, still, and other components.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to, oh, we're still on the productive business, we're going to move on to item B. City clerk.
I'm six B, receive the city manager's proposed budget for fiscal year 2021-22 and staff presentations on the enterprise and internal service funds, budget hearing one.
Good evening once again, city council. I'm here to present the proposed budget. We did have a meeting last Tuesday where the city council received an in-depth presentation of the city manager's proposed budget as well as provided direction. The, the goal of tonight is not to be kept all of that information that we, we went through in three hours on last Tuesday, but it's to conclude a part of that presentation that we did not have time to get to, as well as give a high-level overview of the proposed budget with the note that there was directions from city council that we will be returning for some revisions to the proposed budget. So objective, as I said, is to continue those discussions, receive the presentation on the city's enterprise and internal service funds. We have a number of department directors and staff here to support those conversations. And again, as always, we would like you to ask questions and provide direction regarding the proposed budget. Should you have questions as we go through the presentation, please feel free to ask them. We are covering a lot of information. And what we, what we've done in the past, which I think has been successful, is that we pause after every section to ask questions. And if city council members have a burning question on a particular slide, we pause and address that question. I think that that has been helpful. The agenda for tonight is we will provide a highlight of the overall budget presentation that's provided on June 1 and then the other components that we talked about enterprise and internal service. A budget development process. It is important to note that the city manager's budget instructions to departments was to maintain status quo budgeting with enhancements. Only the most needed enhancements and aligned to a city council priority focus area. Our departments initiated or began the budget with a baseline that was maintaining current operations. Increases to the baseline were really limited to inflationary items, things outside the city's control. And again, enhancement requests aligned to city council priority focus area and also aimed at meeting our revenue policy targets. What's on the screen is the series of four public meetings that we have on the proposed budget. We are here tonight for the second meeting. Our very next meeting will be tomorrow night where you receive a presentation of the proposed budget as well as what's not shown on the screen. And you'll receive an update based on the changes that you, that we talked about on June 1. Proposed budget discussion highlights. So overall, the proposed budget for next fiscal year, which is a July fiscal year, July 1, 30, this total city budget, all funds, is $193 million. So that is proposed budget in all of our funds. That includes our sewer, water, enterprise funds, while in our general fund. Our general fund, which is oftentimes referred to as the city's general checking account, is $51 million. There are a total of 246 full-time FTE positions in the baseline budget. And there are over 100, 104 capital improvement projects that are within the budget for staff to work on. I will tag team this presentation with our finance director. So I'll turn it over to our finance director. Shinji San to take us through the next few slides with regard to our general fund summary, revenues, and highlight. Shinji.
Thank you, your honor. Shinji San, finance director, city mayor and one of the councilmembers. And we can talk about the general fund summary and then some other financial highlights from now on. So this slide is giving you an overview of the general fund budget for the next year. As you can see, we're expecting the general fund operating, general fund revenue to amount of $50.5 million next year. And that is slightly behind our expenditure, expenditure is going to be at $51.1 million. We're expecting a deficit about just shy of $600,000. At the end of the fiscal year, the fund balance is loaded by $1.976 million. This is our baseline budget. No enhancement has been included, has been included in this budget. Next slide, please. As we all know, general fund revenue is made of a variety of tax revenues, including property tax, sales tax, hotel tax, all the known as the TOT tax, the vehicle license tax. And then there are some other departmental charges and then transfers of other revenues also make the whole pie of general fund revenue. Expenditures side, majority of the expenditure from the department that come from safety services, in fire and police departments. And the next biggest department budget is the community service. They're taking about 14%. General administration is made up of a variety of departments, including city manager, council, city clerk, city council, finance, HR, and then IT. So this is a number look of our general fund revenue and expenditure. So we talked about this before. This is a look of looking at the general fund revenues from the operations standpoint view. So at the end, at the beginning of next fiscal year, we're expecting to have a general fund, general fund balance of about 2.6 million. And then we're expecting that operating revenue from general fund, excluding any kind of fund transfers, will be 49.9 million. And expenditure, of course, will still be at $51.1 million. So the operating surplus fund deficit would actually be 1.2 million. So our fund balance without any transfer at the end of next fiscal year will be right at 1.4. In our proposed budget, we're proposing to transfer 600,000 from measure G to keep the fund balance of general fund to 2 million so that it will be in line with our policy targets of a 1.5 million.
And I'll just add here that recognizing comments from members of the city council that that transfer from measure G be aligned to specific funding items within the city operations or to how the allocation was in the current fiscal year, we did here have been seen with just a measure G transfer to the general fund, and so we want to.
Here I would like to give some highlights on general fund revenue. Property tax is to increase moderately with the housing market in top. Sales tax will increase about 11% when economic activities increase after the state fully opens. And TOT will increase about 72% from this current fiscal year, but still more than half behind the pre-covid level. Vehicle license fees will be 9% lower as law schools are commerting from basic schools. So this, this is a look by numbers as to what I just highlighted before. All in all, with all these tax and major taxes and fees, we're expecting 2020, 21, 22 proposed revenue budget of 32.1 million from property tax, sales tax, TOT, vehicle license fee, car room fees, and this is like that. So on expenditure side, we're seeing some pressures, you know, rising pressures on energy costs. That's just new, that is not new. We have been experiencing several years in a row. And we also know that health and other insurance costs are on the rise. And we are also facing uni-annual negotiations. Our contracts are to expire and end at this calendar year. The status quo baseline budget means review staffing, limited ability for enhanced facility and infrastructure maintenance, and significant backlog capital projects still remain. We don't have any, we don't have an easy decision made, even in this year's session. General fund, this is the slide of the general fund expenditure broken down by department. And as you can see, general government, that's the general administration, is about $5.89 million next year. Police and fire is going to be slightly over $31 million in total. And then there is 3.7% from public work, slightly over $3 million from CED and 7.8 million from community services. And we saw non-departmental adjustments. The total of general fund expenditures will be $51.1 million. Long-term look, we're expecting general fund to gradually improve in, over the next few years. Hopefully, with the, with the increased economic activities, we will see a general fund will make, will really take off by the year of fiscal year 2024-25. Of course, we have a lot of assumptions, put it into this long-range look. We need to, we're, you know, with more elevated economy, we may, we may revise our forecast in the next couple of years. In the, in conclusion, general, we expect the general fund revenue to, general fund fees to gradually increase in tax revenues. We are taking a conservative assumption for development projects. Personnel cost in this long-range look will increase about 3% to 5%. There is no significant service level changes in this long-term range outlook. We, we, in the future years, we're assuming some funding reduction will be required to balance the budget. Challenges we are facing this fiscal year. As I have mentioned, we have a binding, flaccid bargaining agreement to expire at the end of calendar year. And we all know the stormwater enterprise fund is facing negative, facing a deficit at the end of this next fiscal year. City naturalized enterprise fund, the deficit will increase. We need more investment in personnel and IT maintenance and investments. And also, we need some funding, we need more funding in committed vehicles. We, based on the city's fiscal budget, budget policy, we have some targets set out for the reserve general fund. We are hoping to get a 1.5 million on reserve. Based on the proposed budget, we are hoping with additional center on our measure G, of course, that's, we're hoping the general fund balance will be 1.976 million. But I know this is in a purview of the council. We are working on this, this number for the general fund out, the general fund reserve may change depending on the direction provided by the council. We do have a general fund reserve account that's really our true sink account. Where our target is to have 25% of the budget expenditures. We're only going to have 2.12, 12.39 million at the end of this fiscal year. I believe that is behind our target, the target of 12%, 25% is about 12.89 million. So we're about $500,000 behind. And general fund, the capital reserve is expected to have a $5 million goal. And in that next fiscal year, we're going to add a reserve about 9.4 million. And city manager has mentioned before, this is had, a majority, a big proportion of this $9.4 million includes a mutual payment of 4.5 million. So these are, that money has been earmarked and designated for a project we are expecting to use in the next couple of years. Emergency disaster fund, we have a target of 3 million. And the DC will be hot by the end of next fiscal year. We expect the debt balance will be long 2.7 million. Although we, from the last, previous slide, the total of the four reserve I talked about amounts to about 26.39, 23.4 million. These are the unrestricted reserves that they actually have. However, we have some significant deficits in the enterprise funds and stormwater enterprise. The deficit adds to about 15, over, over $15 million. So in reality, our unrestricted reserve is only going to have about $10.7 million. And then we also have about 3.39 million reserve. All in all, the net general fund reserve is just around $14.1 million.
Okay, so with regards to the proposed enhancements, we had a significant discussion last Tuesday on this. There's a total of 3.25 million of proposed enhancements. The feedback we heard from the city council was that the position recommendations for measure G, consider moving those or a significant amount of those to the American Rescue Act funds as well as take a look at the other expenditures out of measure G and give significant preference to measure G revenues for rural wage expenditures. So the enhancement requests are currently under revision, and we will, at the beginning of tomorrow's workshop, present a provision to bill enhancement requests. The bulk of tonight's conversation was due to be dedicated to the enterprise funds and financial operating summary so we can get through those slides. And so why don't I pause here and ask if there are any questions from the city council? I know we had a three-hour presentation on Tuesday, but if there are any additional questions, happy to take them now before going into the next section.
Any questions from colleagues? And just for myself, city manager, what you said was that is under revision tomorrow. That would be shown. I had some comments on that, just general comments, not specific, but maybe it's best waited for tomorrow. Would that be fair?
Mr. Mayor, up to you. Happy to take feedback now or tomorrow.
Well, I think it's in general and going forward, in regards to specific measure G. So maybe I should wait to see, and then I can encompass all of those, my personal comments, and then just on this budget and moving forward. So, so we don't get ahead of that. Any questions? I'm seeing none at this point, so if you wouldn't mind proceeding.
Okay, so the next section is our interim public works director, Haywon Ritchie. That will provide an overview of the enterprise department of our water division. That is within public work. So interim director Ritchie.
Thank you, city manager, good evening. Honorable mayor and city council members. My name is Haywon Ritchie, the city's interim public works director. I do have the three next enterprise funds, which are water, wastewater, and stormwater. So overview of the water. There are 18.20 full-time employees. They consist of one water system conservation manager, maintenance service manager, water quality technician, two lead maintenance workers, and eight maintenance workers. And this also supports various managers and supportive staff, including secretaries and analysts. This division ensures the safe and efficient production and delivery of potable water. We manage water conservation programs, respond to urgent community needs, conduct routine maintenance, and ensure regulatory compliance. Next slide, please. So this chart shows a 5% annual rate increase through this year, which is 20, this year 20, 21. The blue bars are fund balance. The green, and I will note that it does go into the red. Sorry, which year is that? That is year 24, 25 forecast. But I will comment on that in the next slide. The green line is revenue. The black dash line shows the combined operating and capital expenditures. The 2021 budget includes carryover of anticipated projects into the next year. Sorry, the 2122 budget includes carryover into future projects. There are larger-scale projects that are anticipated in the out-years, including pump station and tank replacement and installation projects, along with continued main replacement projects in the avenues. So that is the peak in the expenditure line that you see. Next slide, please. This slide shows, what I would like to do first is focus on the second and third. So if you look at the revenues and the expenditures, largely, they remain fairly flat. And then similarly with the operating surplus, there remains fairly consistent. There are debt proceeds that are shown in the next slide. Um, there are debt proceeds that are, um, shown in the next slide after the subtotal, as well as C I P. So what the C I P, uh, numbers show is that in twenty, twenty-one, is estimated about six and a half million dollars worth of capital improvements were made to the water system. Um, the next year's proposed broad budget also includes, uh, fourteen and a half million. Um, previous, this amended budget, um, had, you know, substantially more capital projects. There are some carryforwards because larger projects do carry some larger, um, project balances, however, staff did make an effort to, oh, sorry, staff did make an effort to, um, defund some of those projects that they're in design and to fund some of those in the later out years. Um, I could keep going. Um, so notable budget items include the cancellation of five percent water rate increase in the next fiscal year and budgeting for a new water rate study is included. Accomplishments include completing the citywide water main leak assessment survey, repairing one hundred and five main break, water main breaks, um, beginning the water master plan update, as well as the flange on the urban water management plan. Completed various annual reporting to the state water resource control board, completed annual cross connection survey in conjunction with San Mateo County Environmental Health Services, removed sediment and cleaned interior of four water tanks and reviewed and implemented recommended safety, uh, security features at water facilities. Key initiatives include completing those plans, completing the water structure risk and resilience assessment, updating the drinking water emergency response plan, removing sediment from the remaining four tanks and developing long, uh, long-term preventive maintenance programs. Staff performs pump station and water well maintenance and inspections, water quality sampling and testing, proactive and reactive maintenance repairs to all distribution piping, customer service response for private property repair issues and service needs, water meter installations and working with contractors when switching over to new water system piping from new rehabilitation, rehabilitation projects. Next slide please. Next is the wastewater division. This division consists of five, fifteen point seven five F T Es. It consists of one maintenance service manager, two pump mechanics, one lead maintenance worker and eight maintenance staff. This all, but also supports, um, managing and supportive staff, administrative staff. Responsibilities include sewer collection system operations and maintenance, responding to urgent community needs and regulatory compliance. Staff performs pump station maintenance inspections, proactive gravity cleaning, CCTV inspections, customer service response for private sewer linals, manhole inspections and planned or reactive repairs to the gravity collection system. The city's J I S is also updated to reflect system changes. Next slide please. So similar to the chart we saw for water, this shows five percent annual rate increases through this year, which is fiscal year twenty, twenty-one. The blue bars are fund balances, all shown in the positive. Green line is revenue. The black dash line shows combined operating and capital expenditures. The budget includes carryover anticipated projects, which is the spike that you see. Larger scale projects are anticipated in out years, including ongoing main replacement projects in the avenues, as well as pump station replacement and force main replacement project. Next slide. This table shows that operating revenues are largely flat, operating expenditures, um, go up, and this is mostly caused by interdepartmental allocation increase. There are one-time larger scale C I P projects such as pump station enforcement replacement projects and extensive sewer main replacements in the out years. And similar to the water fund, um, we see the debt proceeds as well as the C I P. So, um, in fiscal year twenty, twenty-one, is estimated about seven point four million worth of capital improvements were performed on the system. Notable accomplishments include, um, I, I, this one is a huge accomplishment, is that there's the lifting of the consent decree, which the city was under. This is no small feat. This was done with, um, combination of operations and, um, engineering staff, uh, having a rigorous program to, um, correct the system and to, uh, execute multiple projects. They completed, um, the operations staff completed five hundred and seventy-six video inspections, pipes, manholes, completed thirty-one mainline spot repairs, managed point-of-sale private sewer lateral inspections and updated the city's geographic information system. Notable budget items include cancellation of five percent water rate increase in this next fiscal year, um, and budgeting for new water, wastewater, uh, rate study is included. Upcoming key projects include multiple sewer line replacements, as well as the Crestwood pump station improvements project. Next slide please. The stormwater division. It consists of five maintenance workers and portions of managers and administrative support staff. Staff performs drain inlet cleaning, seasonal response to flooding, street sweeping and response to San Bruno response. Next slide please. This chart does show a structural imbalance in the stormwater enterprise fund. There's an existing stormwater fee, um, where most property owners pay approximately forty-six dollars annual parcel. Um, this is not enough revenue to sustain ongoing operations, apartments, little equipment and capital needs. The stormwater rate is assessed on the annual property bill, uh, property tax bill and the rate is four dollars and nineteen point, sorry, point one nine six four cents per thousand square feet on the property, with a minimum bill of just forty-six dollars and sixteen cents. There is an effort to, um, there's an initiative to, uh, institute a storm drainage and flood protection fee to help correct this balance. Similar to the other enterprise charts, um, the blue bars are showing revenue and the red bars are for negative fund balance. The black dash line include operating budget, but also C I P, project carryover and projects. This, um, the reason that you see that spike in the expenditures is that this also includes various capital projects, including this five blast storm drain repair that was funded with, that is funded with one point two million Cal O E S grants, of which there is a local match grant, as well as I two eighty-three regional stormwater capture projects, approximately one point one in E P A and state funding. There were also, I would like to note, urgent needs, um, that occurred recently. The San Bruno Avenue hillside slope repair projects, um, within Crestmore Canyon, um, cost about one million dollars for the city and county park in Crystal Springs repair. This estimated cost about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. These unanticipated costs do put pressure on the general, um, fund reserve. Because what is not grant funded is supplemented with the general fund. Our regulatory landscape also just becomes more challenging. We have been installing trash capture projects and we adopted a green infrastructure plan that encourages the installation of buyer retention and public right of way. Staff worked hard to retain a positive fund balance by the end of this fiscal year. However, a negative fund balance is projected to, um, commence the following year with no end in sight unless additional dedicated revenues come into this. Next slide please. Again, total revenues, um, fairly flat, as well as operating. Um, there were increases, uh, due to interdepartmental allocations. Um, there were some C I P, um, and debt proceeds that, that shows the balance and those are the ending fund balances for this year and for next fiscal year. Notable accomplishments include a coordinated emergency response, the stability work at San Bruno Avenue and working to, to repair a storm, um, pipe failure near county park in Crystal Springs. Uh, this does not, however, include the thirty million dollars in infrastructure improvements that are, um, identified in the storm drain master plan. Staff, operation staff did work to coordinate multiple storm drain, um, spot repairs, picked up trash and debris at one thousand twenty-three locations as of March twenty-twenty-one, two largest homeless encampments and two Cal trans lots. They maintained self-serve, the self-serve sandbagging station and completed approximately four thousand feet of culvert inspection. And that concludes my portion of the enterprise fund.
Council member Hamilton?
Thank you very much, um, for your report. I, I'm having a lot of trouble, and this could be just, it's likely, because this is my first time doing this process through the budget. I'm having a lot of trouble reconciling the, um, the, the, the tables with the graphs. So, um, it, it, it would happen on all, on all three, the, the water, wastewater and stormwater, where this graph implies what the revenues and expenditures are in each year and then followed up by a table that showed completely different numbers. So, I, 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 I'm not understanding the way that these are constructed and it's, and, and it's painting a, a wrong picture in my head when I'm looking at the graphs.
Um, I did, which, um, finance assists me with those, um, I wonder.
Yeah, you could, you could choose any of them, it happened at all three.
Yeah, Mr. Ritchie, just, uh, uh, Mr. Hamilton, yeah, finish up and then, well, he was finishing and kind of giving you an example or two. Go ahead, uh, Mr. Hamilton.
Yeah, I, I just, I just, I just want to see, it's like, for example, here on the wastewater enterprise, we see total operating revenues of almost eighteen million for, uh, in the, in the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two and expenditures of ten million. We go to the, the graph for wastewater. The expenditures are up at thirty-four million and the revenues are, I guess, down around the seventeen. So, is, is this because of capital stuff?
Yeah, yeah, it includes both capital.
Part of this budget, a part of this area of the budget. And that, and that happened on all, in all three areas.
Yeah.
Okay. Really hard, it's really, it's really hard to follow because it paints, uh, it paints a very different picture. At least in my head, what's, what's actually happening.
Council member Hamilton, uh, what we can do in the future is add a revenue and expenditure graph that is solely operations. Um, if all of the graphs show the fund, because what is intended to show is the overall health of the fund.
Sure.
Includes both operating and capital expenditures. But when you're, when we talk on the next slide, which is solely about, um, uh, when you look at just the operating revenues and expenditures, that's not shown in the graph. And, and what we can do in the future is to add graph to all of these that several, that shows the fund health, but add a graph that's, that just shows the interplay between operating, uh, revenue and expenditures.
Thank you, I appreciate that, thank you.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Yes, uh, and, uh, council member Hamilton, it, it is, uh, frustrating, the first year or probably two of looking at these graphs, but, um, um, it takes a while. Say, um, thank you, Director Ritchie. Um, I, I caught that the stormwater staff are charging their time to San Bruno response. Um, I haven't heard it directly that way. And so you're telling me that for all the pickups and the homeless encampment cleanup, that the funds were coming out of stormwater?
Let me go back to my notes. Um, I do have deputy director, um, Bosch, I, I was wondering if he could be let into the room?
And I, and I guess my concern there is, I understand, street sweeping is stormwater, a direct connection, but maybe not some of the other bulkier pickups that, that's not going to go into the stormwater, like a sofa or a refrigerator that gets picked up and perhaps the funds should not be charged to stormwater, but to something else?
I am wondering if I actually hold streets. Um, actually.
Uh, Deva, is Deputy Director Dennis Bosch, who oversees the stormwater, uh, Dennis, will you, uh, address the, the council member's question and, and, uh, I, I can tell it?
Yeah. Deputy Director Dennis Bosch, from operations, good evening, honorable mayor and council. Yeah, the, for San Bruno response, it is part of the streets. The, the problem is, is streets and stormwater are within one division when we're talking about the employees. So basically, when, when, uh, San Bruno response comes into the, uh, garbage, um, complaints or advisements that you said, uh, Vice Mayor Medina, streets staff go out and they, um, take care of that, it is charged towards the appropriate fund. Uh, there are times where if, if something, you know, uh, goes onto a storm drain or if something, you know, uh, depending upon, uh, San Bruno response, if there's flooding during, uh, you know, inclement weather, then that, that can be, uh, uh, or is basically charged towards that, but in a sense, it's streets and stormwater personnel are of the same division.
Fine, thank you for that. Being in the same division, but of charging to different accounts. But, but I'll, I, I, I'll let staff figure that out, work that out a little bit. I have another question. For, for the future at some point, um, and not now, um, if, if council could be updated on the percentage of water and sewer mains that have been replaced so far, um, ongoing, since we've, we've, uh, been actively replacing, um, our water and our sewer, uh, mains. If, if we could have an update, I know it's not very much considering the, the miles of, of water and sewer that we have, but it is still important, I think enough that we understand that, uh, there's a lot to do. A lot has been done, yet a lot remains to be done. Thank you.
Well, I'm not seeing any more questions at this time?
So if we have no more questions, I'll invite, uh, city net services director, Sandeep Krishnamoorthy, to, uh, present on the city net services, buddy.
Thank you, city manager. Uh, good evening, honorable mayor, members of the council. My name is Sandeep Krishnamoorthy. I'm the director of San Bruno City Net Services. Here to present, uh, the budget for the coming year and the status of the fund. Uh, can we go to the next slide? Yeah, City Net Services, in terms of an overview, has twenty budgeted full-time employees. It focuses on providing broadband services, uh, along with, of course, television and voice over I P, uh, provides excellent customer care and support. Uh, it optimizes a delivery system, which is frankly kind of old. Uh, it has recently launched a Wi-Fi internet service, uh, and it also provides commercial voice and data services, along with channel one, which is our own, uh, program channel, uh, focused on local origination programming, including such events as this evening's, uh, presentations and council meeting. The long-range financial plan, uh, of City Net Services, uh, has us, uh, pretty much looking at being in the red, uh, through, uh, the twenty-five, twenty-six, uh, fiscal years, except, uh, there is a gradual reduction in the amount being added to the load. Uh, the way the cable enterprise fund adds balances, uh, is through three methods, through capital investment, uh, through, uh, uh, financial payments made on behalf of City Net by the general fund and through, uh, the, the. General Fund, and through, uh, the depreciation and amortization payments which carry over from past years. Uh, the point to note here is that, uh, the capital implement projects for City Net was zeroed out in the nineteen-twenty and twenty-twenty-one budgets, and remains in that status going forward, except for specially sanctioned projects funded from elsewhere. In terms of the twenty-twenty-one, uh, amended budget, our beginning fund balance was projected to, uh, be at fourteen point five zero nine, or four, fourteen point six million, uh, with operating revenues, uh, which have been amended to nine point four million, slightly under that, and operating expenditures projected to end at nine point seven million. Uh, the deficit projected is two hundred ninety-nine thousand, and, uh, the CIP for the router project was to be paid, uh, at the rate of three hundred fifty-two thousand dollars, with an additional two thousand dollars and change, uh, leading to a total of CIP debt proceeds and equipment, uh, totaling out to three hundred fifty-four thousand two hundred dollars. This would have left the ending fund balance at fifteen million one hundred sixty-four thousand. The actual expended, uh, estimated expenditures, uh, are supposed to be at nine point three six four million, and the point to coil out here is that it was originally projected to be at nine point nine million. We have brought down this amount by about, uh, six, uh, six hundred thousand, primarily due to an eight hundred thousand dollar savings in, uh, television content expenses. We project to end the year at a slight surplus of about thirty-five thousand, uh, with, uh, ending fund balance of fourteen point four seven six, uh, million. The point to note here is that, uh, the debt fund proceeds that were to be paid by City Net is now going to be paid by the General Fund, and in terms of account or handling by accounts and finance, that amount is not shown against the loan balance for this year, but it will be next year when City Net is projected to be in a position to actually pay the amount. For twenty-one-twenty-two, uh, projected revenues are at nine point eight million, expenses projected at nine point four, slightly under nine point five million, leading to operating surplus of, uh, projected three hundred thirty-one thousand. The CIP debt proceeds and equipment, as I mentioned before, is to be paid by City Net, and the total here would be four hundred forty-three thousand. So that would lead to a slight increase, or what seems to be a slight increase, in, uh, the loan balance, which would, uh, end out at fourteen point five eight eight million. So, uh, to call out the point, uh, regarding, uh, estimated actual, uh, operating expenditures for this year, it was nine point nine million in the original budget, and we have brought that down to nine point three six four, uh, and are pretty optimistic about ending there, thanks to having saved eight hundred thousand in, uh, television content expenses and additional savings, uh, in pretty much every major spending area of the budget. Can we go to the next slide?
Uh, yes, I mean, I just want to point out, uh, for council, that, that eight hundred thousand, you know, they annualize savings somehow. Uh, I think we started receiving that midway through the year, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. Uh, we, we accomplished that through, uh, viewership database drops of Crown Four and Univision, which saves us twenty-five thousand a month, starting in January twenty-twenty-one, and we also have additional savings accruing to us, uh, through, uh, television subscriber losses, and also through, uh, renegotiations of certain other contracts. Notable budget changes, service level challenges, we plan to have an IPTV revenue stream, uh, coming into play, uh, starting, uh, in the, in the next fiscal year. And what this means is, our television business would essentially have, uh, both a traditional delivery method for a while, and new IPTV-based, uh, delivery method, which would be based on apps on Android and iOS and other formats. We propose to fund this through our operating revenues. Uh, the, one of the continuing challenges remains the aging fleet of our vehicles, since we have zeroed out the CIP, uh, budgets, uh, to achieve, uh, as much of fiscal stability as we can. The youngest vehicle we currently have in our fleet is from two thousand and seventeen, and, uh, they are aging with every passing year. Equipment across the entire, uh, system is in various stages of obsolescence. Uh, the hybrid fiber coax plant was, as an example, uh, put in place in nineteen ninety-eight, and, uh, while there have been upgrades to head and equipment at various points in time, uh, most of the equipment is old and is being replaced on an as-needed basis, uh, but it begs, uh, improvement in terms of, uh, overall system upgrade to fiber itself. A key initiatives for the enterprise going forward is to identify funding, continue planning efforts for fiber to the home, and upgrade Channel One to high definition. This is included in the budget, uh, to be funded by the American Rescue Plan Act. Some operational statistics that, uh, we have, uh, that the enterprise has, uh, navigated during the pandemic. In terms of internet usage, our average monthly, or peak monthly usage pre-pandemic was eighty gigabytes, and that's gone up to over seventeen, an increase of over a hundred percent. Our television usage, uh, has also gone up by over a hundred percent to about twenty-five million minutes viewed a month. In our call center, uh, we have been experiencing, on an average, about three thousand calls a month, uh, starting about two months ago, we have noticed a trending, uh, in, uh, in the number of, uh, calls answered as opposed to calls abandoned, and in terms of an improvement. This is most probably, uh, also due to the fact that we opened our office, uh, and front lobby to customers, starting the seventeenth of May. Uh, so undoubtedly, we continue getting better as time passes. We have had tw- two hundred thirty-three thousand dollars of unpaid subscription bills, and while it's not yet an uncollectible debt, uh, we have been taking some proactive measures in this regard, uh, by having, uh, a new ACSR call and talk to these customers on a one-on-one basis, resulting in a collection of about thirty-two thousand dollars to date of this total, and also have been referring customers, uh, who have some difficulty in making payments to state and federal utility bill assistance programs. Uh, one point to note here is that we have been approved as an eligible provider in the Emergency Broadband Benefit Program, launched by the FCC, and are listed on their website as of today. So we are now in a position to direct customers who have difficulty making broadband payments, uh, to sign up through the Federal Communications Commission for this benefit, which would have us being able to offer them up to fifty dollars of broadband benefits per month for household. There is more to come in this regard on our website and through other sources of announcing the program to San Bruno's residents. Subscriber trends, we lost five hundred subscribers, uh, from March of twenty-twenty, uh, through April of twenty-one. While this seems like a pretty high number, it's generally in line with the loss trends is, uh, being experienced across the nation, uh, coming out at slightly under eight percent. While it's never good to lose a subscriber, the kind of subscriber, what we have noticed is that there has been a corresponding shift to internet users amongst our subscriber base, or those that are left of it. In the seven thousand homes that we currently serve, we have over ninety-five percent of subscribers who get the internet through us. What this means is, these are high, slightly higher margin subscribers, and they feed into an improvement of our operational, uh, balance between revenues and expenses. In terms of the new rate card, which we launched in February of two thousand and nineteen, uh, we have, or, we have now, uh, we now have thirty-seven percent of our subscribers on it, and this again implies a better operating margin, so we actually end up making money on a per-subscriber basis. Can we go to the next slide? In terms of, uh, future City Net, uh, study session, uh, staff, uh, is planning an updated study session on City Net, and the current timing is quarter of one, uh, of next year, the next fiscal year, sometime in August or September. Uh, this is based on several works in progress, which include such things as the finalization of the City Net Revenue Study, which was undertaken by a consulting firm, uh, and a business plan audit of the fiber business plan, as recommended by the city auditor, and we also include, uh, several efforts underway to research federal and state grants. Uh, there's been a spate of announcements, uh, announcing infrastructure, uh, band, uh, grants, uh, available from the federal level to build out broadband throughout the country, and we are exploring ways and means to, uh, apply for these grants, if possible at all, find ways of securing funds from the federal government, both for our own, uh, footprint and also to help expand our service outside the San Bruno City Net area. Uh, which brings us to the last point, we have had some exploratory discussions in terms of regional, uh, fiber and internet, uh, expansion. Uh, this brings me to the end of, uh, this section on City Net, I'll be happy to answer questions again.
Question from colleagues? First, we'll go to Vice Mayor Medina?
Yes, uh, thank you very much for, for this presentation, uh, it's, uh, it's been difficult, um, and, um, the efforts to control cost, cost is appreciated. I have a revenue question, um, in the revenue summary on page two hundred fifteen, wh- where, where does the city pay, City of San Bruno pays City Net Services? How much, how much does it cost to provide internet service to our city?
Okay, uh, as of last year, it costs the city twenty-one thousand dollars, uh, sorry, uh, it costs this city the cost of one, of a one-gigabit circuit, and it's an internal payment between IT and the city. Uh, so the IT department pays City Net, uh, twenty-one hundred dollars a month for one gigabit wholesale connected.
Is that on, is that on any of these line items in, in, and we can, I can get this later, I just was going through and?
Uh, it would not be separately called out, it would be part of the internet revenues.
Okay, 'cause the inter, internal service allocations and interdepartment charges is almost nine hundred, nine hundred thousand?
Uh, that's the outflow from City Net for being a department within the city, so this is what we provide to the pool, the city collects to, uh, decrease costs across the city services, across the, the spectrum of services it provides.
And, and, and just for a relative value that City Net provides to our city, could you estimate what it would cost to obtain the internet, internet, internet service from an outside vendor?
It would be, uh, several times what we charge the, uh, city. It's difficult to put a number because that number seems to keep moving upwards, uh, but if, if all the services were to be obtained on a commercial basis, it would, uh, be many times higher, and I base this on AT&amp;T's per-business line charge of about nine hundred dollars for one-gigabit service, uh, to one small business. So, uh, we don't have one small business, we have, uh, a city, uh, with many departments to serve.
Understood, and thank you for being able to pull that math, uh, really, really quick. Um, and, and as for looking at your target in the number of households, uh, increasing from seven thousand to seven thousand one hundred and fifty, um, where, where is that coming from?
It's coming from primarily the new launch of IPTV services that we have in position right now. Uh, it's going to take several months to actually get that service in shape and launched, uh, but the reason we believe it's going to add services as opposed to the general environment of, uh, losing traditional television customers is because of the additional functionalities we seek to provide through Roku devices, through iOS and Android apps, and also because of the fact that we would still be one of the, if not the only player in the city, uh, to be able to offer, uh, live sports and news coverage.
And, and what, what was the marketing budget?
Uh, the marketing budget is.
Pretty low.
Amongst, it's pretty low, it's spread into a few buckets. We have an other services budget of about sixty thousand dollars, we have community promotion of about ten to fifteen thousand, and we tend to keep at a low profile in our outreach, simply because a lot of the marketing efforts we could undertake in terms of mass media usage would be very inefficient, given that we serve only one zip code. If you were to serve a broader footprint, it might make more sense to take ads in the likes of a Sanity or Journal, or, uh, something that has a broader reach.
And, and when, um, staff are, I'm sorry, when a new, new customer signs up for water, are they handed a, a brochure, or is there any promotion at that moment?
We, we have brochures available at the counter, uh, when people come to sign up at the city itself. Uh, we have started the practice at the suggestion of our city manager to place welcome packets in new developments, uh, but we have not had a consistent program to offer this in every packet given to every water customer.
Right, and, and I think that's something that, it's hard to really expand your business if you're not going to do some promotion.
Completely agree.
And however, however we can accomplish that, um, we have to give you the budget to do, to do so.
I would only caution on one aspect, one, I, I have my eye on the fiscal control aspect of things to keep it, to keep costs under control, and two, on the relative inefficiencies of going very broad in our marketing campaign, uh, given the small footprint we serve, and the third being that, since we are now currently in the process of switching horses, so to speak, in television delivery from traditional to IPTV, we have taken the, uh, cautious approach towards doing anything right now, as opposed to going out with more of a, uh, more of a push soon as we launch IPTV.
Great, thank you very much.
Uh, Mr., through the mayor, if I can just add on to that, uh, because these, these are significant conversations, um, and, and we, we had some internal discussions, and so Director Kistmerzne did mention, uh, the door hanger program that we, uh, launched internally, um, and, and begun a, a door hanger package for some of the, the new developments. Uh, what we are also exploring internally, connected to City Net, but also general city services, is a welcome package that can be provided to new people that move into the community, and currently we're exploring ways to do that. Uh, we talked about, uh, when people set up a, a new utility account, but oftentimes that's al, that's also too late, uh, because by the time you're setting up your waters or, uh, and you're moving from a, a place where maybe you had an AT&amp;T, you, you may just port over your AT&amp;T. And so we're, 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 we want to explore partnerships with our local realtor offices, uh, so when people are buying new homes, they can be informed of, if you're hiding in San Bruno, uh, there is San Bruno City Net, uh, as well as partnering with, uh, our NDU, our multi-unit developments, where they have internal, uh, information, uh, when they are leasing out a unit, uh, that would, that they, they provide, um, to potential tenants, uh, and so we're, we're exploring all the, partly it's City Net, but it's also a sort of welcome to San Bruno package that, uh, would, would have the latest, uh, recreation guide, as well as a, a general, uh, brochure about, uh, all things San Bruno.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Thank you, Director Krishnamurthy, for your, your presentation. I've got, uh, two questions, but the first one is, um, in the, in the, um, the introductory letter to the budget, um, it was stated that the twelve-point-four million dollar fiber to the home project would require the, the full funding upfront, and I'm, I, I don't, I'm curious as to why that would be, and why we wouldn't be able to phase it in by, you know, neighborhoods? to phase it in by neighborhoods or, or whatnot. Why would the, why would the twelve-point-four million be required all upfront in order to do fiber, fiber to the home throughout the city?
Well, the way the plan has been envisaged is it's a fairly quick rollout. And given the order cycles that are necessary to get the equipment in place for each successive phase, and there are seven phases, we would have to have quite a bit of money contained within the twelve-point-four million to be committed fairly quickly into the early months of the build-out. The total build-out timeline is for twenty-four months. Most of the money to secure materials would be consumed pretty much by month fourteen or sixteen. And then the remainder would just be a deployment period for those funds.
Okay, thank you. And then my question has to do with subscribers on the old rate cards. What, what do we do to proactively, do we do anything proactively coax people off of those old rate cards and onto the current ones? And if, and if we aren't doing anything, you know, is it, is it in, is it on the roadmap to start?
I'll start by addressing the second point, which is, is it on the roadmap? And the answer is yes. And the reason the answer is yes is because of the planned launch of IPTV services. We have a lot of customers in the old rate card who are television-heavy consumers and not as much of the internet. So we want to be sure we have a plan in place where we can tell them, you can move this package and actually end up saving fifteen dollars a month or twenty dollars a month, whatever the final number is, as compared to your current price. So that's one. The second is, given the pandemic and the level of TV usage increase amongst our customers, we have not gone out and made a concerted push to get them off of the rate card. Because again, it comes back to the point about launching IPTV. If we get them off the old rate card, what do we get them on to if they're not heavy consumers of the internet? And our new rate card is internet-led, so it's, it essentially takes the internet, it packages it with local television channels. And it may certainly appeal to the, to the working family demographic and to the younger people in San Bruno, but to our older customer base of which we have a fair sample may not find it that attractive. That's the reason we've not done very much till now.
Okay, great, thank you.
There are questions from colleagues? Not seeing any hands up at this time. I'm sorry, Councilmember Mason.
Yeah, I'm just curious if you, if there are demographics as far as which, you know, maybe each groups that are, that have San Bruno cable or using San Bruno internet. I'd be curious to see the demographics.
We can, we can try and get stuff to you. What I can say off the top of my analysis over the, or several recent periods is we're starting to skew a little lower, but we're not seeing a big uptake yet in the younger demographic in San Bruno. Our subscriber base still tends to skew forty-five plus.
Okay, that's where I would piggyback off of what Councilmember Medina says about advertising. I also just wanted to say that, did you say at the beginning of your presentation that, was it Vila Mundo that you saved twenty-five thousand dollars a month?
It's Univision and Cron Four.
Okay, wow.
Those two, those two collectively cost us twenty-five thousand dollars in content fees per month.
Okay, and then my last question was around the funds where people are behind on their bills. Is there, are there any services that are being shared right now with the residents of San Bruno, like through a mailer, through the city manager's newsletter? Not necessarily, I guess upcoming because, because we're at the beginning of June, but to say if you got behind on your payments, here are some resources that are there to help you.
We actually got an approved letter mailed, then we followed up with a second notice, and now we have a person calling one-on-one to coax people to call in and establish a payment plan, without which we have started downgrading people to different lower tiers of service, especially when it comes to television service. And the reason is, we are only a middleman in television content delivery, so while we may, or we incur a cost of almost a hundred dollars for a hundred basic subscriber, if it doesn't show up as a payment to us, it's a net loss of a hundred dollars.
But I mean, there, is there any assistance outside of a payment plan, which is directly with San Bruno, like any additional assistance that's available through the state to help individual, or the county, to help individuals get up to date with their, with their payment plans?
Yes, there is. There's a state program which helps people who have trouble paying their rent and the yearly bills, get help from the state itself. And as I said during my presentation, we just qualified today to become an eligible provider in the emergency broadband benefit program established by FCC. And this allows each household to receive up to fifty dollars worth of internet connectivity on a monthly basis. And this program has about three-point-two billion dollars of funding for the whole of the United States and will last as long as there is money to be dispersed.
And just in addition to what the director said, the answer to has it been included in the city manager's newsletter is yes, as well as our social media posts. And what Sandy mentioned, which is, we are, we know who are behind on their bills. At this point, we're doing dedicated outreach to those individuals to encourage them to apply for the state and federal utility payment assistance programs, which would help them out with utility deals as well as if they're behind in rent. And so at this point, it's a dedicated outreach for those state and federal programs.
Any other questions from colleagues at this time? All right, thank you Director for your report.
You're welcome.
The, the question here is, does the city council desire a break, which is why that slide was built in? We do have, I believe, thirteen additional slides left. My memory and math is correct. Yes, there is less, there's, so to him of sixty slides and we're on forty-nine, so we have less than that. We have about ten slides left.
What, what is your expectation on what the ten slides might take? Just give me a ballpark as far as time.
Sure, I, I think it is, it is a few divisions. It is our central garage, our building and facilities, tech and technology departments. I think the presentation of all those would, would be approximately twenty minutes. Questions from the city council, I hazard not to guess.
I, I wasn't going to ask you to predict that. No, just, just presentations, and I would, I would say at this time, let's proceed, please.
Okay, so our internal service funds are the central garage, building and facilities, technology and self-assurance. In this presentation, we do have the director that are responsible for those divisions of central garage, building and facility and technology, ready to present. The internal service fund balances that are shown above are for, they are operating fund balances. These are not the reserve fund balances for our garage and our, which cares for our vehicles as well as sleep. It is also not the reserve fund balance, fund balance that covers building and facilities or technology. These are the operating fund balances. And then we can step through these presentations, and the first up is central garage. Director, Ricky.
A central garage overview. There are two mechanics, which also includes portions of management and support staff. Staff provide employees with operable and well-maintained vehicles by performing preventative maintenance and repairs. They also provide vehicle acquisition disposal services as well as support services. Next slide, please. Accomplishments include implementing new workflow in garage management software, including fleet service support portal, auction surplus vehicles, equipment and reintroduce new fund source for equipment reserve, updated garage operating processes, streamlined parts ordering, improved interdepartmental communication. Strategic initiatives include improving tooling and part storage, reduce surplus, continuing to maintain and repair one-hundred-and-forty-six service vehicles, researching fleet electrification and reduce life cycles. I do want to note that some budget enhancement requests include stripping and re-quoting the garage bay floors with paint, et cetera, and toolbox and equipment storage and workstation. Baseline budgeting does mean that we're unable to restore prior budget cuts to supplies, contract repair, hazmat and laundry services. Next division is building and facilities. Next slide, please. This, this vision includes two maintenance technicians, one field supervisor, one custodial leader and four custodians, in addition to portions of management and administrative staff. Staff performs facilities and building maintenance and repairs, proactive and reactive response to building repairs, and custodial cleaning of all city facilities and overseeing implementation of the ADA transition plan. Next slide, please. Accomplishments include completing, completion of the moved division to public works, implementation of new work order facility maintenance management system and work request portal, managed installation of city hall video security camera systems. As well though, last year was, also other challenges. This division provided COVID response, including Plexigas barriers, air purifiers, temperature scanners, as well as office conversions at fire station, city hall, community services and fireman's hall. Strategic initiatives include continuing maintenance to repair of cities' buildings, continuing to implement ADA transition plan, installing HVAC at police fireman's hall library, as well as fire flow security. Additional budgets, augmentations to, enhancements to include maintenance for library roof spot repairs, interior paint, pressure washing exterior walls and sidewalks at city facilities, HVAC roof contract maintenance repainting generator at Arbor Court, door and entryway and lock key service uniform cleaning. Statistical baseline budgeting has meant that there's limited ability for enhanced facility infrastructure maintenance and CIP backlog remains. That concludes these two internal service strategies.
Not seeing any hands up, so I'm going to say, why don't we proceed, please?
Good evening, honorable mayor, members of the council. Sandeep Krishna Murphy, Director of CityNet and City IT. And here to present this evening, proposed budget for City's IT division. Can we go to the next slide? The IT division of the city comprises three full-time employees per budget. Point to note here, we currently have two and a half-plus full-time employees, all of them extremely dedicated, very talented and committed to the cause of IT in the city. The half-plus comes in the person of our new interim IT manager. We've had two failed recruitments to recruit a person on a full-time basis for this job and have finally chosen to go with this gentleman who is retired and vacant and is therefore not available full-time to the city. He does bring a lot of talent and dedication to the job and is very much busy with various IT projects at this time. The task of the city's IT division is to manage and maintain the city's core IT infrastructure, maintain the network and data security, man the centralized service desk, manage business applications and management, and provide solutions management to pretty much every department across the city, manage the phones for the city's phone network, and also oversee the website development and administration on a day-to-day basis. Can we go to the next slide? Thank you. In terms of budgets, the amended budget for 2021 was a million and fifty-eight thousand dollars, of which the year is supposed to end at a million and fifty thousand spent, leading to a surplus of seven thousand six hundred dollars. For 2022, the departmental revenues are projected at nine-hundred-and-seven, with expenditures projected at a million hundred-and-thirteen thousand, leading to a, what seems to be a deficit of two-hundred-and-six thousand. And the first point in the notes, you will see that the CARES Act funds paid for securities enhancements in 2021 to the tune of two-hundred-and-seventies, two-hundred-and-seventy-seven thousand dollars. And the city plans to use as appropriate or for appropriate use projects, funds to be received from the American Rescue Plan Act to make up the deficit of two-hundred-and-six thousand dollars in 2022. The big projects on the annual for the city's IT division include the city's website and the fourth system, both of which are due to be changed in the coming fiscal, primarily because they're police, they're end-of-support and end-of-life scenarios. New digital tools for conduct of the city's business continue to be enhanced or introduced based on providing greater functionality in the digital realm to the city's citizens as well as to the city's departments. A notable example of that would be the ETrakit project, which involves CED and finance and IT. Many IT functions are moving to the cloud within the city for increased security, and these are adding to ongoing expenses, leading to the slight increase in budgeted amount requested for expenditures in 2022. At the same time, many IT systems also reaching end-of-life and end-of-support. I had just mentioned the city's website and the phone systems are two of those prime examples. There are more systems coming into play as time passes on, and these will need to be changed up to be more modernized and up to date. Next slide. That brings me to the end of my section. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from colleagues at this time? Not seeing any hands, then if we can proceed?
So, Mr. Mayor, that concludes the staff presentations tonight. Again, the last, the, the next budget meeting is scheduled for tomorrow. And at that meeting, we will review the proposal CIP budget, as well as review revised recommendations related to enhancements based on city council feedback last Tuesday. And so that, that meeting is scheduled for tomorrow at five PM. And so that is Wednesday, good night.
Okay, if there's any members of the public that wish to ask questions or offer comments, you could please raise your hand at this time. I did want to take a moment and thank, there is a few folks from not just finance, but also in public works that are, have been on the line this entire time, being available, and they're the ones behind the scenes, putting this budget together, so we want to thank them very much. Seeing no hands up, want to thank staff for their presentations and time and from everyone staying here through, through the evening. With that, we'll go ahead and move on to item seven, comment from council members. We're going to go to first one, Mr. Tom Hamilton. The bullet point here is, discuss establishing a rotation for pairs on council members to hold virtual town hall meetings with the public on a quarterly basis, to provide residents with a more direct opportunity to interact with council members, discuss city issues and ask questions.
All right, thank you. So hopefully this won't take long to, to discuss. And thankfully, the staff will appreciate this is an item that requires no staff input, no staff work, no budget. This is just something for the, for the five of us. So in, earlier this year, Councilmember Talzar and I co-hosted a virtual town hall over Zoom. It was well-attended, it was well-received. And I think it's something that we should, that we should continue to offer, to provide the public with an opportunity to interact with us more directly than they can do through these programs. with us more directly than they can do through these public meetings, through public comment, where we can't respond and, or often can't respond directly, and just to kind of increase our engagement in the community. The, the, these town halls require little to no preparation, at least, at least I didn't prepare very much, council member Salazar may have, but it was, it was just a matter of scheduling a Zoom and getting the word out as much as possible for people to show up and just being available. And, you know, we didn't run into any Brown Act issues, we didn't, you know, there was no, you know, it was, it was really, you know, low-key and not, not a lot of preparation required, and I really think that this is something that we should, that we should get a little bit more organized around, so it's not just, it's not just something that happens on the whim when two of us decide want to do one, and it's something a little bit more, if we can, if we can come together on how to do it and try to offer them maybe once a quarter. And also, I think it would be a great idea for us to, to, you know, informally vary the pairings, so it's not always the same two going together, and, you know, and, you know, to show the public that we're one, that we're one unified team, you know, serving them. So I wanted to throw that out there and get, get your, get folks' comments, and maybe if we're super lucky, a commitment for another, another pair to host the next one.
I'm done with myself, sorry. Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. What, I see the city attorney is here, so I'm not going to call on anybody at the moment. I'm calling the city attorney.
I've got to stop doing this, I'm sorry.
Here comes a genie, Mr. Mayor.
So only, only a very brief comment, and I'm sorry, I, you know, didn't, didn't know in advance really that this was going to be on the agenda, so I didn't have time to do a lot of research, but I think there, there is a concern with respect to the Brown Act regarding varying the pairings, and the reason for that is because if you have two-two and one, which is really the only way to do it without violating the Brown Act, if the first two people then incorporate, let's say, the last person as part of their two, then they really got three people potentially discussing and participating in a governmental decision. So this issue has come up in the composition of a city council subcommittees, and the question has come up, can we rotate council members in and out of those subcommittees? And the answer is generally no, if they're ad hoc subcommittees, because otherwise they're subject to the Brown Act. So, so that's the only thought that occurs to me at the moment. I don't know if other cities, for example, have a model that do it one way or another, we could certainly look into that, but that was my only sort of immediate thought when I saw this.
So given that, I mean, the, the, you know, there aren't, we don't have set agendas, and, you know, we just kind of follow, follow the, what, the questions that the, that the public are asking. So, you know, given that, that, that council member Salazar and I did one of these in, I guess it was March, maybe it was February, I don't remember now, and if I were, if it rotated back around to me and I were to pair up with, with Linda on the next one, it would be, it's, it's really the same, in my mind, it's really the same, the same kind of deliberation that we, that we need to do with ourselves to make sure that we're not violating the Brown Act. So if, if there was something that we discussed, that we discussed in public on the, something that I, that I discussed with the public in the, the last town hall that I did, and then, you know, you know, eight months from now, I'm in another town hall with, with Linda, and that same subject comes up again, maybe I would have to say, you know what, I can't talk about that one, and let Linda go. But I, you know, I don't know, I just, I, I'm just trying to figure out a way for us to be able to engage with the public without, without falling, you know, without violating the rules, but also not being in the, in the, you know, so in this artificial bubble that we're in, that makes it impossible to have real engagement.
Right, one, one last comment, and then obviously council members have thoughts, but just from a legal standpoint, obviously each individual council member can meet with constituents as they see fit on an individual basis. The issue is doing it on a sort of two and two and one basis, and I understand your comment about you would have to self-regulate your discussions. I have to say that over a period of months, maybe longer, the potential for inadvertent violations are really, I think, quite high in that circumstance. You might, might have a meeting on January first with constituents with one council member, and then on December thirty-first with a different council member, and maybe the same constituent comes back and raises the same issue, and then all of a sudden you have three people taking a position on a particular topic. So I guess I, at the moment, can't advise in favor of that, but I'm happy to do some more research if the city council does wish to, you know, to go ahead and implement this, I can come up with, with some advice for all of you about how do we implement it so that you don't run afoul of the Brown Act. But, but I do think I'm relatively confident that it, it cannot be a rotational sort of thing, but I really would need to look at that further.
Thank you, city attorney. Vice Mayor Medina?
Yeah, I was gonna congratulate you, Tom, for, for councilman Hamilton, for coming up with this proposal. I see our cautious city attorney doing his job, trying to keep us from inadvertently breaking the Brown Act. So I guess can wait to hear. Linda and I did one, I don't know, maybe in January, I don't remember, but yeah. Your effort to, to want to engage the community, they always can call or send us an email as well, but it's great to have that Zoom meeting. It's, it's kind of fun to kind of, to encounter somebody that you haven't met before that's going to ask you a question. But let's wait and see.
Councilor Mason?
Yeah, I was gonna say, thanks for putting this on the agenda, council member Hamilton. I think my suggestion that I would have is that we have a listening session with the entire council as a study session. It's similar to a town hall, but we're listening to what residents want, and I do hear the city attorney, and maybe we focus on things that have already been voted on, so we can discuss them if they're not going to come before us again. But I've had a couple of town halls, virtual town halls, and, and I generally give more updates to try to avoid Brown Act situations. So that would be a suggestion.
Okay, Mr. Salazar and I haven't commented. Just for me quickly, I know one of the best ones I had actually, well, it was obviously before COVID, was in person, and I have one scheduled next month, and a part of town I haven't, I haven't been at, but it's, it's going to be outside. But it was in regards to Scott Green's app, and it was specific topic, fifty people showed up, those I had not, had not seen before. So, and we were very, it was very based on that one topic, and then I stuck around after, and if people wanted to talk about parking or something different, then we did that. The one that I know was done with Dave Pine, what I, what I found interesting is everybody wanted that individual time because it was an individual situation to them, and they really, it was more personalized, and they didn't want a group setting, so that seemed to be the example on, on the town hall, the only thing, because town hall to me means everybody, and as you know, we've had some of those meetings, right, at the Legion Hall, but we have to be noticed, we're all there, the topics need to be listed, to my knowledge, so they can be more driven in that way, and we've gone to, to listening campaigns or other things that we're just there, we listen, we're hearing the community on a topic that is gathering data or it's upcoming too, just to hear from folks. So anyway, council member Salazar, do you have any?
No, I mean, I hadn't thought about, you know, the potential for the Brown Act violation, and, you know, when I, when I reached out to Tom to do this, you know, Laura Davis and I had done a couple, and Tom and you, and I figured, okay, it's a nice way to sort of come up with something that we can partner on. Marty and I worked on a subcommittee to come up with fees a few years back, and, you know, we got to kind of work offline, you know, we just met down a grand leader and hashed out this thing on a Saturday morning, so I think those personal relationships are important. Council member Mason and I are on the Heart Committee together, so we worked on a couple of projects there, worked on a couple of projects with the mayor, so it is nice to have those, but, you know, if doing these public meetings were that, that conversation, right, the conversation's not controlled like council member nothing brought up, it is, it is risky. So as much as I enjoy those engagements with the community, it seems like the safest way to do it is for us to do them individually, and then let's, let's find a way to increase the pairings on subcommittees and projects where we can each work together, so we can get that, that, that personal, you know, we can build on those relationships, which really helps in forming a cohesive council in the long run, so those are my thoughts.
Okay, well, we, we thank, thank you, Mr. Hamilton, and like the city attorney said, had he had a little more prep, maybe he could have brought some, some options to the table, so I, he's off camera now, so, but we got his, we got his advice. I was just teasing, the attorney, and so got some advice, and like you said, you might be able to come back, but have some time to look into it and then give some.
So one, one final comment on, on this. I'm going to assume that the answer is going to be, don't do it, it's too risky. So if, if, if then, you know, that, as council member Salazar says, that, that leaves us with having to do it solo, then I, then I would want to make sure that we are doing them, and that we would, you know, maybe we, maybe we establish a rotation where we each do one each, you know, however many months or whatever, we can, we can hash that out, but just to make sure that they, that they happen, just to make sure that we are engaging, and maybe we make a commitment to each other that if, if, if you, Mr. Mayor, are doing one next month, that all of us get the word out, that, you know, that, that's happening, and, you know, just to try to make sure that everybody, you know, knows that we are trying to reach out and we're trying to engage with the community and provide these opportunities. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Seeing no other hands, and thank you, city attorney, and thank you for what, what council member Hamilton is predicting, but we'll wait to hear a little bit more. And Mr. Hamilton, was there anything else for you this evening under council comments?
No, the only other thing that I was going to bring up is already brought up earlier, which, which was the, the vaccination event through the Samwell County Fair. It's an awesome opportunity for folks, so I might as well plug it again. If you haven't got, if you haven't got your vaccine, you can get your vaccine for free and bring, and bring your family, get into the fair for free, and they'll even give you some, some free food and rides, so it's a pretty good deal, so take advantage of that if you're listening and haven't had your vaccine yet.
Thank you.
Mr. McGarry, if I just make one, one closing comment, sorry.
No, we're, you know what, we're going to add you to city attorney.
City attorney.
City attorney, go ahead.
Well, I was just going to say, let me, let me work with the city manager, and we'll come out with a series of options for you to implement, and you can decide how you want.
It's some brainstorming, we, we get it, and I know we're in the middle of the budget, so I understand, so, we understand. Okay, thank you. Councilor Mason?
Yeah, and I was also going to say, so just, I guess, took over my conversation, I'm looking for some notes, but also another thought is just to group that in with what we're working on under the stronger governance, since we're having that conversation anyway, like how do we make it a regular, reoccurring event and make it part of that larger conversation? I didn't want, I want to make sure this didn't get lost, that Hiwan mentioned during her presentation that they got out of a consent decree, and I know that that takes a lot of work and a lot of follow-up, so I just wanted to make sure that we commend staff for doing that, and we do not want to be in consent decrees, and it's hard to get out of them. So thank you for the work on that. And then the last announcement I just wanted to make is that Supervisor Canepa is having a big reopening state, reopening of the state celebration on June fifteenth. It's from eleven to two-thirty, people can register for the event, they're looking for volunteers, and you can just Google the event, reopening Supervisor Canepa, it'll come up, and it's at Mike Nun Way in Koma. There's going to be a barbecue, live entertainment, and I believe that they're going to have vaccinations also available, so if you can make it, it may be worth your, your, your day or your hour to enjoy the reopening celebration. Thank you.
Any other council members with comments this evening? Vice Mayor, no? I'm just going to say to show that we're, as council member Mason said about the fifteenth of Canada, but Sunday, going to the city park and watching, once again, some traditions back, the Peewees, their last year playing at Diamond Two, and then having the traditional Parkside St. Roberts baseball game, was nice to see some community out and some things returning to normalcy, but outside doing the right thing, so kind of nice to see that we're, we're getting there. So anyway, with that said, on a personal note, I will see all of you tomorrow at five o'clock, and with that, we're going to go ahead and turn to the next regular sound city council meeting, which we held on June twenty-second, twenty twenty-one at seven o'clock via Zoom. Everybody enjoy your evening, and we'll see you soon.